We're just used to spelling it everywhere we go.
Good morning. So we just asked for your patience. We're waiting for one more so that we have a quorum. Thank you for your patience.
We're almost done.
Good morning. So we just asked for your patience. We're waiting for one more so that we have a quorum. Thank you for your patience. We made it. Good morning. Before we get started this morning, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Jack Terrell Wilks from Lakeside United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Grace and Julia Kimeg representing Girl Scout Troop 393. If you will please stand.
Join me in prayer. Gracious and holy one, we thank you for your presence among us and guiding us. May we listen to your counsel. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us this day and always. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with you others in your creation. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our elected officials, businessmen, churches, civic leaders, and families and individuals that make our city the great place that it is. And we thank you for the countless people that we don't know, who without them, our city would crumble. They are our backbone. We aspire to live by the words of the prophet Micah when he asked, "What does the Lord require of us?" The answer he received was to do justice and love kindness and to walk humbly with you, oh God. Unfortunately, we know that we fail to live up to that objective. The reality is that it's more convenient to hate our political rivals than it is to seek common ground and work for the good of all people in our community. Let us be attentive to the cries of the poor. Let us share the burdens and come to their aid. Give us the courage to take on systems that hurt our most vulnerable citizens. May we treat those in need among us with mutual respect, fairness, and love, and let our love be hope to them and encouragement and freedom. Let us renew our commitment to direct our energies where they belong on repairing systems that do harm. Oh holy one, give the mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council the wisdom so that they can address challenging times, the wisdom to distinguish between right and wrong, so that they may usher in an age of civility, stability, and tranquility in our community here. May the ordinances and laws of our city benefit all citizens regardless of who they are, who they love, the hue of their skin, their social economic status, whether they're religious or not. May the work of this council serve to establish justice here in Oklahoma City that carries a message of equality for all who come and go from this great land. Give these that gather this day the insight and direction that they need to deliberate on the items before them. We ask that you would give us strength and the tenacity to strive to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you, oh God, for it's in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Julia and Grace. All right, we'll call to order this council meeting, April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Mr. City Manager, if you would like to kick us off.
Sure. So the first item that we have is the resolution. It's just introducing the budget and what it's doing is setting the public hearings. Technically have one today. We'll hear the budget in a couple of departments. But then, May fourteenth, May twenty eighth will be our budget introduction. And, I mean, our budget hearings. And then on the fourth will be, is the scheduled time for adoption. And so we'll start this process. It'll start our public process. So this resolution is just approving, setting the hearings and then starting the process.
So I'll take a motion. Pass this unanimously.
So the next item that we have is the presentations of the budget. And over the next few weeks, every other meeting, you know, we'll have a regular council meeting. Then when we have the in-between meetings, we'll have our budget hearings and have various departments will be presenting their budgets to the council. Chris York, our budget director, is going to start us off this morning with just an overview of the budget, giving you an idea of what we've had in this budget. I will tell you that as we start, and Chris will cover some of this, but as we start, this budget year is a little bit of a challenge. And really, the challenge has been, we're projecting still to have sales tax growth. But if you look at the current year, we're at about one and a half percent growth. For next year, we're looking at about one and a half percent growth that's projected. What happens with that is like, it's about half of what our normal growth is in sales tax, a little bit less than half. And that, what the effect that has had is we've had growth in salaries, growth in other costs due to inflation. We've had a lot of pressures on us that have pushed the budget upward, that have increased our costs, and revenue is just not keeping pace. So when we talk about looking at budget cuts, which you've heard this, we talked about it in the budget workshop back in February. It's really, we take a same service level budget if we keep all the growth that we've got in there. And then we have to start working back from where our revenues are projected to be. And they're projected at a lower level than what our expenditures are. So that's led to some of the adjustments that you'll see presented today. There are additions in the budget, and we'll cover those as we go through this. But it's really working, some of it's funded with funding that we've already had in other areas that we had set aside previously to be able to carry us forward. So it gives a little bit of an incomplete look. Also, when we go into budgets like this and we're taking smaller levels of reduction, many times there's places in services and supplies and materials, other places where we can adjust our budget that doesn't directly affect personnel. Typically, when we take a more significant cut, we have more impact on personnel. So just want to set that stage. I also want to recognize Chris and his team, some of his budget staff is here. All the work that they do, really, this process starts in November of the previous year. And so they start working on doing projections and estimates and begin working through the budget process. And then I want to recognize also all of the departments. You won't hear from every department as we present the budgets. But every department that's involved in this, there are so many employees in each department that can get engaged in this because we want this process and it's defined in our financial policies as a decentralized process that allows those departments that are on the front line to make their recommendations and decisions regarding the resources that they'll have going into the next year. That's whether we're increasing something or making decreases, that they're engaged in this process. So many people, dozens and dozens of people have been involved in preparing the budget. And I just want to recognize all the work that they've done and especially they have done. And then especially Chris and his team. I really appreciate the work that you all have done, your leadership in this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris, let him present us the budget overview.
Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate the comments. I would echo those. We did bring the budget office with us here today. They are hidden behind our firefighters here. And I would just like to acknowledge them and thank them for all their hard work during this process. It is a lot of hours. And so I will just jump right into it, starting with, excuse me, the schedule here. And so as City Manager indicated, we're going to receive presentations over the next three meetings. Today, we have fire and police following the budget office. On May the fourteenth, you'll have public transportation, development services, and parks presenting. May twenty eighth, we'll have, we'll finish up our presentations with public works, utilities, and airports. And then on June the fourth, we'll ask for your consideration on adopting the budget, which will start, of course, July the first. So just as a primer for our residents, we are in the upper-left quadrant here of our chart under the budget development process. But this is really a year-round process. It starts off, we're actually doing some finishing touches on the resident survey for this current year. But for last year, we started that process and that feeds into our council priorities, which then informs our department's strategic business plans, which they update every couple of years. And then we go right back into budget development based on the economic conditions that we're experiencing at the time. And so here we have your council priorities. These have been in place since twenty seventeen. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to highlight the icons for you. These will again be in your budget book next to items that directly speak or respond to your council priorities. So look for those in the document. And then we go to our headline slide here. So for next year, we do reach a new high watermark at over two billion dollars. This is the highest budget the city has ever had. But there's some nuance to this. I want to reconcile this with what you were briefed back in February at the budget workshop. You'll note that we're showing four percent growth overall. But it's a cut year, as the city manager had indicated. And so when we zoom into the rows, general funds specifically, you can see it is contracting over the next year. We are down about zero point three percent over what our current fiscal year budget is. Same story with our other operating funds at down to three hundred and two million, about a point four percent reduction. But then you see in our non-operating funds, now these are going to be your MAPS three, your MAPS four, your Better Streets, Safer Cities, your capital-related funds. They are growing by eight percent. And that is almost exclusively driven by our MAPS four program spinning up their projects over the next year. They plan on spending some money. So when you balance that all out, we end up at four percent. But in reality, our operating funds all took cuts. These are where we pay for our services and our staff from primarily. If the mayor Holt were here, he might also call out that we tend to over-budget on purpose, especially in our capital funds. What we do is, we try to budget all of the money that they've accumulated over the years in these long multi-year projects, our multi-year funds. And then when we go to spend those, we need to draw on that fund balance that's been accumulated. So we try to give our project managers maximum flexibility to budget, all the authority that they need to roll out these projects. But what that tends to do is overstate our budget somewhat relative to what we're actually spending. I'll give you an example. So for fiscal year twenty-three, we brought to you a one point nine billion dollar budget. We spent one point three. So to put that in context for you, we're probably going to spend less than this two billion dollar number that you're seeing right here. In terms of headcount for staff, we are able to add nine positions this year despite the cuts. But I need to add a little bit of context to this picture. This might lead you to believe that we have slight growth. But that experience is not universal to our departments. For most of your departments, about eight of them out of the nineteen or so, we had decreases proposed. Only four added headcount this year. And one of those is really skewing the number here, and it's a very important project that we're standing up. But it adds twenty positions by itself. So if you take the net of this across the rest of the departments, we are basically cutting. I would highlight for you also, and we talked about it in the budget workshop, that our resident growth is about seven percent. Our staff growth is a little under four percent. So we're doing more with less, but we seem to be keeping up in terms of what our resident satisfaction levels are. On the last survey, we ranked pretty highly compared to our peers despite having less staff members per one thousand residents. Okay, so we'll start off with the revenue overview. This really sets the tone for the budget. It tells you your level of resources that you can provide services with. So going back to that two billion dollar number, our largest recurring revenue source is taxes, of course, at eight hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, or roughly forty-seven percent of the budget, excuse me, forty-four percent. And then our second largest revenue source, when we're looking at the total budget, is going to be our fund balance. And again, this is going to be your MAPS three, MAPS four, where they've accumulated funds over time. And now they're budgeting to spend that in this next year at thirty-three percent. And then federal grants went down about eighteen million from last year as we finish up ARPA and CARES Act and all those other funds. But we're still accounting for over ninety million dollars in the next year. When we zoom down to our operating revenue, taxes become even larger at sixty-four percent of our budget. And again, excuse me, and then fees and charges end up at about twenty-nine percent of our operating budget. We talked about fees quite a bit during the last council meeting because we have a fee study ordinance proposal on the table as well. And then transfers, other revenues, and interest, and fund balance account for about less than three percent respectively of the total. And again, that's because we've pulled out all of our non-operating funds. We're not seeing that fund balance number there anymore. So zooming in again to our general fund revenue, sales and use tax comprises about two-thirds of the budget together, or seventy-three percent of the total amount that we receive. So this is really the lifeblood of the city here. Other taxes are fairly small, at about two percent. These are going to be your alcoholic beverage tax, your gasoline tax, commercial vehicle tax. Franchise fees represent about nine percent of the total, and those come from use of our rights-of-way. These are going to be taxes paid by companies like ONG, OG&E, and so on. And then fines and court costs are pretty small, at about twelve million bucks, and represent about two percent of the general fund budget. So again, this six hundred and fifteen million dollar number is just slightly less than what our general fund budget is in the current fiscal year. So what happened? Well, when we look at, as the city manager mentioned, our primary revenue sources are going to be sales and use tax. In the current year, we expect to end up at about one point seven percent, contrasting, as he mentioned, from a three percent historical average. We're just not growing as fast. Then if we look at our supporting revenues, for example, the franchise fees here, those had been growing at double-digit growth over the last few years. And in the current year, they're just tapering off. To put some numbers to that to you, in the current year for franchise fees, we were looking at fifty-five million dollars budgeted. We expect to end up at about fifty-one million dollars, so four million dollars in the whole. Next year, we're projecting some growth to get back to, say, fifty-four million, but that's still less than the current year's budget. So the sales tax is growing weekly, and then our supporting sales, our supporting taxes, our fees can't make up the slack in the next year. So then skipping to the expenditure side of the budget. So this first slide breaks up our expenses across the two billion by the municipal budget act's specified character classes or expense categories. And so you'll see personnel services is our largest category at thirty-two percent, or six hundred and thirty-six million dollars, followed by capital at thirty-two percent at six hundred and thirty-eight million. And then other services, which includes contracts, utilities, and chargebacks at nineteen percent, or three hundred and ninety-two million, and so on. As we zoom in again to, let me go back, our operating expenditures. So personnel services grows to sixty-eight percent because this is where we pay all of our salaries out of, and it comprises about two-thirds of the budget at this point. And then followed by other services at a hundred and sixty-six million dollars, supplies at thirty-six million dollars, and transfers at eighty-three million dollars. So as we focus on the general fund specifically, personnel services looks pretty similar, and really, the whole construction looks pretty similar to our operating expenditures, with personnel services at sixty-six percent, other services at twenty-seven percent, and then supplies at a very small two percent, transfers at five percent. So as we break that up by function, of course, public safety comprises most of what we spend our money on. That's about sixty percent, followed by public services at nineteen percent, and that's going to include areas like public works, development services, and planning. Culture and rec is comprised of our parks department and also the cost to run things like the Paycom Center and the convention center at twelve percent or seventy-one million dollars. And then general government's going to be more of our inward-facing departments at fifty-six million dollars or nine percent. And those are going to house your city manager's office, HR, IT, general services, and so on. So we talked about the sluggish revenue growth. Let's talk about, in contrast, what happened on the expense side of the house. As the city manager mentioned, our costs are increasing faster than our revenue. We've seen that in our supplies and parts especially. We just brought you a budget amendment specific for that during the last council meeting. And then our personnel costs from wage increases have gone up significantly over the last couple of years. That was necessary to stay competitive with the job market. But those increases range from four to eight percent. And we're telling you that sales tax is growing at one point five percent. You can do the back of the envelope and tell you that we got to tighten the belt to keep up with the balanced budget here. So now I'm going to go through the major highlights by function for our departments. If council's agreeable, what I'd like to do is if you're going to receive a specific presentation from these departments, I'd like to hit the fast-forward button a little bit, just so you're not covering the same ground twice. But I will go over the highlights for you. The fire department will be presenting today. And one of the major changes here, and I referenced it a little bit earlier, is they are standing up a new crisis response program. This is adding twenty civilian staff members to the fire department that would respond to opioid calls as well as mental health calls. It's intended to be split-funded. Seventy percent is coming out of the general fund, and this is out of our task force recommendation dollars that we've been able to reserve over the last couple of years, as well as thirty percent coming out of our opioid settlement funds that we are receiving on a recurring basis for the next ten-plus years. And again, when we take these twenty net out of the total position count increase, you'll note that this is one of the few departments that put on this type of headcount. The department's also looking to add three fire dispatchers. They've had trouble keeping up with an aggressive goal of dispatching ninety percent of their calls within sixty seconds from the time that they receive it at fire dispatch. They've been trailing that for a number of years, and they think adding the additional headcount will move them in the right direction. But again, you'll see or receive a presentation following mine from Chief Kelly. In the police department, we have a net reduction of three civilian support positions. We also have a reduction of about one point two million dollars in line items. This decrease is primarily from the E nine-one-one subsidy. There was a recent law change from the Hayden Fleming Memorial Act from last year that changed the way the OTC, the Oklahoma Tax Commission, was handling this revenue. And so it's expected to increase over the next year, which allowed us to decrease the general fund subsidy. Chief Gorley's presenting after fire today, and so I will skip ahead. Finishing up with our municipal court and our last public safety-related department, the department is proposing to reduce a net of two position off from a few of its divisions. And some examples of those are on the slide for your reference. Okay, turning to public services, starting with public works, they've proposed a net reduction in five positions. Those are listed there. They are all vacant. And they're also reducing their asphalt material budget by about a half. And they're also reducing their asphalt material budget by about a half million, or excuse me, a quarter million dollars. Their overall budget is decreasing by about $1.9 million in the next year. They will present to you on May the 28th. Development Services is cutting three vacant positions across its code inspection, development center, and permits program. And they will brief you on May the 14th. So, MMR proposed a net reduction of one COP position and one city position. There's also an ad there on the screen for an administrative specialist for RTA. They're already doing this work for the Regional Transit Authority. This just allows them to put on a position dedicated to that and charge back the RTA for some of those services. They did increase their overall budget in the general fund by $3.4 million in support, and they are scheduled to present to you on May the 14th. Utilities only added one position. It's the SCADA Systems Analyst. It was funded by the Tinker Air Force Base contract and is a requirement of that contract. In addition to that, they moved about $1.9 million of their city operating funds over to the trust, and they're just looking to consolidate some of the expenditures that they pay there, things like communication services and so forth. You will receive a presentation for them on May the 28th. Okay, switching to Culture and Recreation, our only department here is Parks. And so, for our Culture and Recreation's function, Parks Department is proposing to add three positions. Now, these were funded by other cuts they made in the department. And this is needed to add maintenance positions for our Woodson Park East Sports Complex, which is opening up shortly. They are also proposing to remove weekend cleaning services at our reservable pavilions for a cost savings of $61,000. And then, they are requesting to repurpose Minis Lake View Center and repurpose the Schilling Center with community organizations for a net savings as well. They will present to you a complete budget on May the 14th. General Services cut one vacant trades skilled worker to achieve its budget cut. They also reduced their fuel budget because fuels are projected to remain low over the next year. And it does include this $6.76 million in CIP funding. This is a routine transfer that we make every year to fund building maintenance and our fleet purchases. It is routine, but in tough years, we haven't always been able to fund this, so we do like to include it when we are able to fund it. The IT Department does add a position, a system support specialist too, to help support airports' IT operations. But, despite the add, they still end up with a net one reduction. The department is also reducing some of its line item budgets related to cellular services. We had a charge-back process where the departments paid IT, IT then paid the bill. We're cutting out the middleman. Departments are paying the bill now, and so, we're able to reduce this budget from their line items. And then, they were able to add about $645,000 for contractual increases. These are things like our Microsoft licensing, so to keep up with our multi-year contracts. In the Finance Department, they've proposed a reduction of a net two position to achieve its budget target. Municipal Counselor is adding one existing overage to be permanent, and that's going to be funded from Utilities to help support their operations. And then, my last call, I'll not related to departments, is so we still have $1.2 million reserved for task force recommendations on policing and homelessness. You might recall, last year, that was $2.4 million. Half of that is now being directed towards the new program that Fire is standing up, the Crisis Response Program. The MAPS IV program budget is increasing $142 million as it's really starting to ramp up. And then, finally, we've got $42 million in the Grants Management Fund for continued implementation of ARPA and the Emergency Rental Assistance II program. All right. So, of course, every year, we comply with state law. That's the Municipal Budget Act in our case. And we always try to meet the best practices recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, GF.O.A. We've won this award for decades. But, I have to put an asterisk here. We do not win it for FY '24 yet. They're running a little bit behind. I'm going to stay hopeful that we are running an unbroken string, and we still will get the award. But, I do want to call that out, that I've got FY '23s up there and not FY '24 as we normally would have. I might give you a quick tour of the budget book here. So, there's two volumes as usual this year. So, there is your performance piece, and this is going to have your issues, your strategies, and your metrics and targets for next year across all of the departments. And so, I encourage you to take a look to see how we're performing and what the departments are forecasting for next year. In the budget book, we've got the introduction, which has the city manager's message, along with a lot of good demographics for you. In the financial summaries, this is the quick location to get to any fund you might be thinking about and wondering how much we're spending where. Then, we have the department's budgets, and those break down the department's budgets and positions across all of their programs. And then, finally, we have the fund summary, which is our actual legal document. This is what we're actually turning in to the state auditor and what we're required to produce every year. The capital budget section gives you a sense of our capital projects over the next year. And then, in the appendix, we have a number of things. We have a glossary, we have our financial policies, a copy of the Municipal Budget Act, and so on. I do want to highlight that this year, we do have highlights for you in our policy section. There are just a couple of administrative policies we're looking to update in the Budget Office. They pertain to purchase order rollover and transfer signatures. I can tell you that they are administrative in nature and have virtually no effect on what council would see in terms of reporting or anything else. Again, they're just a process change for the Budget Office, but they are actually highlighted there. If you'd like to look at those and you have any questions, please reach out. We're happy to go over those. Okay, so let's talk about public comments. This year will look a little bit different, and we'll talk about that a little bit. I'm excited to announce some minor changes here. And so, of course, from the formal process, we'll still have today's meeting. We will open up our comment period. We've typically extended that, and I'm open to doing that this year as well, but I think our process will change, so maybe that won't be necessary. We have the 14th, 20th, the 14th of presentations. 20th, we typically end our public comment period so that we can present them on the 28th. But, let me also talk about a new tool that we have. So, it's a little bit light, I apologize, it's hard to see. But, the Public Information and Marketing Office has stood up a new system for us called vision.okc.gov. The full link is slash budget feedback, but you can just go to vision.okc.gov. We will still take all resident feedback in the old ways, in terms of an email, or you can even text comments to the Action Center, or you can write us a letter to the City Clerk's Office if you so choose. But, what I'm excited to present to you here is some work that Zach Nash and the team at PIM have been putting together for us. Some of the challenges that we've had with resident engagement have been, one, as Councilwoman Nice has pointed out before, the 20-day comment period is very short. It's hard to have a dialogue with our residents and then turn that into actionable information for our departments. And so, this system looks to change that. And what it does is it allows us to have year-round feedback, not just on the budget, on really anything that you want to comment on for the city. And so, in theory, what we could be doing here is reviewing this before we go into the budget cycle, passing this information to our department heads, and then, they can consider that as part of next year's budget. It's a difficult lift at this stage in the budget to take all that feedback in and then make major changes. And so, anyways, I think this will accomplish that. The other thing that has been a challenge for us is it's very difficult to get actionable information off of just one-way communication. If someone sends me an email and says, "Hey, you should add a park." That's a great point. We will look at that. The question, though, is that what are you willing to give up? Or, what are you wanting to prioritize over that? So, there needs to be a dialogue. And I'll give you a very silly example of this. I receive all feedback as soon as people know that I work for the city. And usually, I have to explain that, no, that's the state, or that's the school system. But, my barber had mentioned one time, said, "Hey, you need to take care of group XYZ employees. They have a hard job, and you should pay them more." And I said, "Well, that's not my lane, but I'm happy to hear that concern. Let me ask you a question. What do you think we pay those folks now?" And he listed off a number. And I said, "Oh, well, it's actually double that." And he said, "Oh, well, never mind." And so, point being is that when you start to have these dialogues, you almost need a primer in municipal government budgeting before you truly understand all the things. And so, what we're looking to do is to provide that to our residents. So, what you'll see out here is an overview of the budget. There's a video there that I won't play for you today. You'll see the schedule, the timeline for the entire budget process. You'll see every presentation that we're providing you today, including the departments. You'll see the proposed budget book out there. And then, it also allows us to have long-form communication. So, think web forum or some type of, it's not really chat-based. It's more like you post something, and then, someone can respond to it. And the nice thing is, staff will be able to respond to these questions, provide information and resources. And then, other residents who are also interested in that same thing can see that conversation way in, or maybe they come to a different conclusion, and so, they'll be able to provide those things. And so, we'll be incorporating that this year. Again, we can still use the old methods, but we're trying to push all of our resident engagement into this platform. And again, this is out of the Public Information and Marketing Office. Zach Nash is here if there's questions particular to this software, but we're excited about it. And with that, that is the last slide that I have for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the knowledge on Zach and the team and the work that they're trying to do with this platform. I think also, this is a similar platform we're going to incorporate when we're doing our budget, I mean, our planning for the GO bond. So, I think it really allows for better engagement. So, I appreciate all that work. And again, I just want to note how much I appreciate Chris and his leadership and the team and all their work. And then, all those folks have been involved with this. And I know we're going to start doing our budget presentations and walk through these, but I really do want to recognize that and appreciate the work that you all have done.
I had a question. When will this go online as far as the last slide that you just showed?
Today.
Today, excellent. Are we doing like a newsletter or some type of push to get that out to our residents to know that this is live and active?
Zach mentioned a social media broadcast. I don't know if there's anything else PIM would like to add to that.
Okay.
But, that's what I'm aware of. And I know that there's also a news release that we typically do, in terms of the Budget Office.
Excellent.
Yeah, just like Kristen said, Zach Nash with Public Information. We will push out on social, front page of the website, as well as sending out a newsletter, all of our communication tools. We'll let people know about the budget feedback opportunities.
Thank you. And I just want to note, as we're looking at the timeline, and one of the things that I was also paying attention to for this, as we prepare for our budget every year, is the importance of getting these conversations kicked off sooner than later. And what I mean by that is, I know our fiscal year starts July 1. However, the different departments are already working on the next budget. So, how can, and keep thinking through this, how can we ensure, like, by the time November comes, because that's really when we start putting these things together, if you will, that our residents truly understand, here we are, and not February, when the budget workshop happens? That they need to truly be engaged around that timeframe of November to get us to February, to understand those things and how we continue to look at that LFR and all of the other things that are incorporated within the budget or the different departments to get you all to the next fiscal year.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And what I'm hopeful with this product is that what we'll be able to do is build in a year-round schedule so that we can make these pushes to solicit feedback from our residents in different stages throughout the year. So, that way, for example, in November, Zach and team can push out a request to start feeding that information. And then, we can also, the other piece of this is that we're going to have to compile these conversations that have occurred throughout the year as well. And we will make those available as we receive them.
So, one more thing, Councilwoman, meaningful engagement and how we, we don't want engagement fatigue, right? We're asking constantly for feedback. So, one of the things Chris and I have talked about is, in other departments, is how can we overlap our engagement efforts and pool data, pool feedback that is relevant to these projects? So, it's not just like, tell us what you think about the budget. It's, well, we're going to go out for bond issue engagement, or we're asking for Bike Walk OKC. How can we pull this in? And three months ago, we launched a Envision site, kind of tell us about what you want to see for Oklahoma City. And we're using that data to end this budget process. So, we're trying to be very strategic in how we use this, how we ask for feedback, and how we act on it. Because meaningful engagement and letting people know that we're listening and matching the needs of our community with the services is important.
Thank you for that. And just one last thing, as we're looking at the timeline, and I appreciate you, Mr. York, for saying that I'd say it's too short of a timeframe for the budget process as far as our public hearing is concerned. I still think the 20th, cutting it off on the 20th and then being, having a presentation about it on the 28th, to me, you could still have, if you had 48 hours to compile those things to get to council, that still gives you at least three, four, or five more days in order for people to have a response. So, I would hope that we could still look into how we can still stretch that timeframe for people to get really engaged because it sounds to me now that this is going to be a new process. So, we're going to have to really try to see how that works with that public engagement, public hearing, and how people respond and/or send letters, or just go to the website, and even call. And to the point of what you were saying too, Zach, with the fatigue, I know for yesterday, there was something that we put out, the city put on on Facebook, about additional dwelling units. And I reposted it, but people are replying to me, giving me their answer instead of going to the website. So, it's also those types of things that we have to work on, how we educate our community and engage with them as well. Because when we share those things, clearly, they're going to respond to us. And how are we going to make sure you all get that information? So, just some other things to think about as we think through this. Thank you.
Very good.
Just one thing. I'm going to sound like a broken record. First, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for what both you and Zach and your respective staff are up to right now. I think it's good work. I was just honing in on B4 and B5, which is not a bingo reference. That is a reference to our budget. I think that the difference, the different revenue sources, right? The sales tax, the general fund, and then, the use tax and excise and these sorts of things. I think, and I've said it previously, I'm going to say it till the end of my time on this horseshoe. I think that's where a lot of the, your barber story kind of speaks to it in some respects. I think that's where a lot of the disconnect is with the public. I suspect that if you looked at the number of people who show up to vote for any of the council members, so like, for instance, Ward 2, total vote is around like 4,500 people. But, there's like nearly 50,000 people in Ward 2 who are eligible to vote, like, over the age of 18, right? And what is it, like 85,000 people per each of our wards? So, Ward 2 is like a high-turnout ward, but 4,500, right, you know? And I know that a good number of those people, just using Ward 2 as an example, know these different revenue sources. But, just last night, when I, on an Instagram story, put a graphic about the budget process beginning today, I have a developer who I have engaged many times and has engaged with me many times, and has literally even asked about like conditions in Crown Heights with their streets, or the drainage conditions, right? And when I posted, "We're going to have a budget presentation tomorrow," and his immediate reply was, "Crown Heights, streets, and drainage." And I thank God for Zach and your team because you all had created these budget videos, right? You also created a How City Government Works video and a Streets, How We Fund Streets video. And so, I just immediately shared that with him. I was like, "Hey, remember, we've talked about this before." But, I just think that that conversation, I think that conversation about how we fund operations versus how we fund, you know, about every 10 years, the infrastructure needs of the city, I think that information is very lost on an overwhelming number of people. Like, of that 4,500 that turn out to vote in Ward 2, I don't think that even a majority of them have that understanding, right? And these are not dumb people. And then, I think, now think of that gap between 4,500 and the 80,000, right, who ultimately live in just Ward 2. And I think a lot of this is that, I was just looking at OKCPS's website as you were talking about websites. Like, we do not, nowhere in K through 12, as I have said multiple times, nowhere in K through 12 are we teaching our students and their families how this level of government works. How it works, and if they don't know that, then how can they provide any meaningful feedback to us? Combined with that, the fact that OKCPS's majority, in terms of its students, as many of us know, are Spanish, they're Hispanic, or they're Latino or Latina. That is the majority of the student body, and many of their parents do not speak English. And we can be mad about that, or we can recognize the reality. And so, I was glad when I was looking at the website you And so I was glad when I was looking at the website you all created, there's multiple languages there. I think that's wonderful. But I guess what I'm saying is there has got to be a very deliberate conversation with the largest school district in the city about how this local government works so that these parents and their grandparents can actually give us meaningful feedback about conditions in their neighborhoods. So it's not just my Crown Heights folk, who I love, but it's the residents and neighborhoods that, you know. I mean, by the way, if Crown Heights is behind in its street conditions, right? A historic preservation neighborhood, what about the neighborhoods who have not had that tender loving care, right? So I'm going to keep beating this drum because it is, it's necessary that our people have the understanding of how this level of government works so that they can advocate for these needs. So the school district, the school district, the school district, the school district. It has to happen there. And there has to be an intentionality about the language barrier that exists there as well. So otherwise, I think you're on the right track. I think this is good. I'm just saying like that. So that's going to be a huge problem, particularly as you're heading into this bond. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. So next up, we have Chief Kelly presenting the Fire Department Budget.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, Richard Kelly, Fire Chief. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We're real excited to go through our budget and give you an overview of where we are this year. I know it's a challenging year in the budget process, but as was said by Chris, I'm really excited for the opportunity that we're going to have, I believe, to serve our residents at a higher level. Before I get started, I would like to thank my team, obviously Clint Regir, who's our Business Manager, Lena Croy, who works for Clint, doing an outstanding job in that area, building the presentation, working through the challenging areas. But I also like to introduce my command staff. This is our team that really works hard every day to really see things through, bring things to fruition. First, I'd like to introduce, he's not here today, but I'm going to say his name because Deputy Chief Harold Thompson's our Fire Marshal. Has been in that position for many years. He's retiring in June. So he told me, you can't make me come today. And I, I said, okay. Now he had another event going on. But I really want to thank Harold for his leadership and what he's done for our city. But I am excited to announce, in waiting, we have a Battalion Chief currently, Dominic Brown, who's going to be stepping into his role. And we're real excited to have Dominic on the command staff. We have our Deputy Chief of Operations, who you all know very well, many of you worked with before, Mike Walker. We have our Deputy Chief of Support Services, who I don't know how he does it. Every day when I walk in his office, he looks at me funny because I'm giving him another project, but he works hard, Shane Smiley. And we have our Deputy Chief Battalion, Battalion Chief of Administration, which is a new position that we created. It's kind of the catchall that does a lot of different areas. Unfortunately, it works directly for me, and that's Derek Keel. And we're really excited to have him on board. But thank you for the opportunity to be here today. If you want to follow along in that budget book that's nice and small, you can turn to page C 53. That's where we're going to be, the Fire Department Budget lines out. Moving on to, obviously, the most important thing for us is, is the mission statement. And it's to provide emergency response, fire prevention and public education services to the Oklahoma City community so they can have their lives and property protected. Our mission statement is quite frankly, respond quickly, safely, courteously, meet the need. And everything we do is about meeting the need. And I really feel excited today about the budget process and what we are going to be able to meet the need of our community. This here gives you just a quick overview of our organization. You can see from the top there, Fire Chief, and then we have our four divisions that we have. Our maiden divisions is Operational Services, Support Services, Fire Prevention Service, Admin Services. And I introduce the deputies that are over those, and I'm really going to break those down in more detail, so I won't spend a lot of time here. You can see our total staff that we have is 1,133 positions, an increase of 22 positions. I'm going to give you a detail of that increase today. As always, we like to show the services that we do provide, that we're fortunate having the support of our community, every day our residents, but also as well as our city leadership to be able to provide these services. This is our fire stations and apparatus. You just seen this last month when we gave an overview of our EMS services. But talking about the contract with E M S A, you can see in blue, just so I highlight that again, those are actual fire stations. But that's where we'll have our four EMS transports units in service, very close to bringing that to fruition, excited for that. As, as you all know, throughout the city, we have 38 stations, 39 engines. As one of our stations downtown provides two engines, Station 1. Of those, every fire station we have is advanced life supports. We have a paramedic on every engine company in the field. 13 ladders, 17 brush pumpers, six battalions. So we serve that out of six different battalions. Six heavy tankers that provides that water supply in those non-hydrant areas, 3,000 gallons. Four light rescues, a hazmat unit, a heavy rescue unit and a water rescue unit. Getting into our budget changes, sorry about the slides. It looks like we moved it over from Microsoft that it messed everything up. So apologize for that. Real quick, the overview we're going to have, and I'll read it to you on this. You'll be able to see it in detail on the next slides. We had the 5.1 million in personnel. This is just the roll up cost that we have. And that's what it, the changes in personnel costs are related to different salaries, merit, retirement. This is just same service that we provided last year, that 5.1 million dollar increase. So that, that is, we was talking about, Chris gave that update of the challenges that we have just to provide same service every year. That shows you that just in the Fire Department. We're also going to talk more detail. I have individual slides, about 1.8 million for the Mobile Integrated Health Program, $800,000 in our Public Safety Sales Tax Increase, 271,000 in our dispatch, and we're also deleting a Fire Lieutenant position from I T. This gives you an overview of our major budget change that Christian was talking about. This is the largest change that we have within our organization. When we talk about mobile integrated health, there's, there are several different areas that we're, we have within that. We have a community advocacy program that's already in place and running, and that's to deal with our high volume utilizers in the field. But now we're excited to roll out a new one. We've had our overdose response team that I'll be giving an overview. But what we're talking about today is our crisis response team and our call diversion program that we're putting in place. And this will add 20 positions. I'll get more detailed into it. But this, the 1.2 million, the 1.8 million total comes from the Task Force Reserves that was mentioned earlier from Christian. And then we have 580,000 that's coming from the opioid settlement for the Special Purpose Fund. If you look at this, program is designed to provide support to the Police Department, the Fire Department, E M S A, and to provide the appropriate response to behavior health and overdose incidents. So that's what we're looking at, is to be able to meet the needs of our community exactly where they're at. The program was developed in concert with the Oklahoma City Police Department. So we're really excited that we are able to work with them to assure the needs of our clients in the field and our O C P D partners. Chief Goyner and I have worked together on this. We fully support the program. You're going to see if you can change that to, sorry about that. We'll try to make it where you can see it. Yeah, reopen it. Reopen it different. No, it didn't. Go ahead and go, that's okay. Go to slide 6. Again, we was talking about the, so I'm going to get more detail on each one, but go back on this slide, please. The crisis response team, again, we look at, there's two different teams, the crisis response team, the crisis call diversion. They will operate from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. We'll have two teams that operate each day. And the goal of this is our crisis response teams will respond to high acuity and medium acuity calls when actually 911 calls come in. So we'll be able to respond to that. The crisis call diversion program will be in our dispatch center where we'll have specialists there that can take 911 calls when we average about 18,000 calls a year that come through for behavior health calls. We'll be able to immediately connect them with someone in crisis call diversion program that will be able to get the right and appropriate response to them. And if we, if we have those where we need law enforcement, fire response, E M S A, we will still respond, but that team will also respond with them. And the goal of this, when we show up, is obviously to de-escalate in those situations, to be able to take that over and get law enforcement back in service, to get the Fire Department, E M S A back in service and to be able to operate in that manner. The nice thing about the crisis call diversion program, we'll also be dispatching. So if the alternative response team program comes online, and that's what we're looking at for contracted services for low acuity calls, we'll actually do dispatching in that area. So we'll dispatch that team, work with that team, be oversight for that team. The nice thing about that, if we, we'll also be able to connect with 988, so we'll have that relationship there, so an overflow in those situations. So we really believe this is a totality of the program that provides the best service to our community. The next slide really gives you a breakdown so you can see those 20 positions. Obviously, we'll need a program manager in that program, managing the program. And this is someone that has experience in that. It'll be someone that has three years related experience with community and social services and health agencies, two years prior of supervisor experience, a master's degree in social work, marriage and family therapy, clinical psychology, counseling psychology or clinical mental health counseling. So we're really looking at someone that has a background in that area to be able to lead that team. And then the crisis response team will be made up of three clinicians that gives oversight in that area. So they really are able to work with that team and make sure that we're providing the appropriate services. And if you look at that oversight, those clinicians, they'll have two years of experience in social and healthcare agencies, a master's degree in social work, just like the, the program manager. So they'll be a high level experience in that level. And then we'll have our teams in the field that will be made up of a paramedic, a mobile integrated healthcare paramedic, and a behavior health navigator. And the paramedic has to have two years of experience. You want someone that has that experience in the field of working with people. The biggest thing on that is, the reason we have a paramedic is many times on top of having, you know, some type of behavior health issue, they have medical issues. And we want to make sure that we're taking care of the needs on both sides. Our long-term goal in this is that we can provide that medical clearance because of the experience level we have, that we can get people, those individuals into services more quickly and connect them in that area. And then that mobile integrated, that, that will be a two-team, the paramedic and the navigator. And they will have two years' experience. That navigator will be required to have two years' experience in that. And the, and the long-term goal of that is they'll have that case manager two level, they'll be able to provide that experience in the field. So it's important that we have that in the field. And then moving over to crisis call diversion, many of the same level of experience, but they'll be in the dispatch center. And we'll make that where we can probably do a rotation, so some can have the field rotation and be able to rotate in the dispatch center so they'll have the same level of understanding. But we'll have two behavior health clinicians and then four, and that's to alternate the teams, so we have those. We'll have a clinician in there with the navigator as well, as well the navigator being in there every day. You also see that funds there for the Medical Director's Office. With this increased load that we're seeing in our mobile integrated health, there was a request to provide additional funding for the Medical Director's Office so they could have a dedicated physician to oversee this type program, especially as we're expanding and moving to different services. Another major budget change we have is adding funding to the Fire Sales Tax Fund. This is to, to address our emergency medical technician training. We're increasing our paramedic program of that training, and we're paying for that for our firefighters. Currently, we have 41 firefighters in the paramedic program, significant cost of the department, so we needed to increase that area. And we're also excited to partner with law enforcement, with, with our law enforcement partners to really roll out a robust U A V program to provide that first response in the field, to get intel back to us as responders, to be able to mitigate these situations we're dealing with in the field. And that'll be able to provide that services to fire, law enforcement, emergency management, E M S A, anybody in that, to provide that U A, U A V capability. Our long-term goal in that is to provide that network throughout the city to have those services available for anyone responding to an incident. The next one is our Fire Senior Dispatchers. We're adding three Fire Senior Dispatchers there. In FY 17, we cut three out of the budget. We had 18 at one time, went back to 15. Our goal is to go back to that 18. And the reason is, we've had a significant increase in our call volume. And also with these technology pieces that we're adding and the challenges we have, the goal is that to be able to provide some higher level services and dispatch. So the call volume, the challenges of getting those calls dispatched in a timely manner, as Chris mentioned. Our whole goal of this is to provide more effective services to our community. And then we had one major budget deduction was an I T lieutenant that was in I, the position that moved over in the radio shop when the, the radio shop took over from Fire. We had an I T person that was over there. We're deleting that position. A lot of different funds, you know, it seems like we're continuing to expand this. Just as said earlier, you know, it looks like a significant increase in our budget this year from 221 to 236. But I'm going to talk about some of this as rollover that we see. If you look at the first one, General Services Fund, that's 131 million for 863 positions. And then we have our Better Streets and Save City Use Tax, that's 771,000. That's actually for a storage building that we're building to be able to provide additional services with the growth that we have. Our Capital Improvement Fund of 3.7, that's actual 2.4 million dollars that we have in there for Fire Station 31. And then we have 1.3 million for our renovations in our bedrooms at our fire stations, our two company houses that we have in there. And then the next one you'll see is our Fire Sales Tax Fund, obviously pudgeoning for 224 positions. Our Medical Service Fund that we started last year for EMS response for 40 positions, our transport program. And then you'll see our Special Purposes Fund at 751,000. That's actually paying for six positions in the mobile integrated health program that we're starting up. So that's why you have that fund. And then you have our Maps for Use Tax of 33.8 million dollars. Seems like a significant number. But 21 million of that is actually carryover for apparatus that we've already encumbered. The challenge that we're seeing a delivery time, that we're just rolling that over year, every year. It's taken sometimes almost up to four years to get an apparatus. So that's why you see some of that rollover. When you look at our beautiful pictures here and our lines of business that we have, we have four different levels. Administration, Operations, Support Services, Fire Prevention Services. I'll get more in detail on that in each one. The next one, you'll look at our administration. This is our administration services that we have. We have 19.2 million dollars in there, 39 positions. The majority of that goes to executive leadership, 36 positions. And then we have our Public Relations and Marketing Team, which is our P I O. Again, the goal of that is to provide information to the public, but more importantly, to build our brand and to make sure that we're keeping a positive image of the City of Oklahoma City and the City of Oklahoma City Fire Department. And that's our goal every day to do that. We have some admin highlights, and we're real excited. This is a, a lot of information right here. But we've been very, working very hard to get our data into programs that really give us a lot of information. We know, number one, it's verifiable, but we're able to see every day the work that our personnel are doing. This is involved in our L F R program. We're moving to these B I platforms. And this is something that the Business Manager and his team, especially Clint's been working on with an outside vendor. And we're really taking that next step and to be able to provide effective data. And we'll be able to detail this and be able to look at what's inward facing for our firefighters to help improve services, but also outward facing to the public to show the great work that our men and women are doing every day. This is a small example here. This is a smoke alarm that we do, and we have an app that's been built. Our firefighters have it on all of their phones, our laptops, we have it on our iPads every day that they can do input. So this is one of those small areas. You can see it shows the date if we want to look at that. And then when you scroll down, it shows the actual total of alarms that's been installed. And that's smoke alarms been installed in that timeframe. The next one shows it by shift, so you can see a breakdown by shift. You go to a more definitive detail by district, and then you can actually go down to where there's a lot of information on the left-hand side there. But really gives it by station, so you can see all three shifts. What we've learned in the past, firefighters are very competitive. So sometimes if we just throw this out there and say, they, let them look at it and go, hey, where do we compare to the shift that we're working next to? Usually that helps bring up everyone involved. So we're really excited for that opportunity. And it also shows the great work they're doing every day. Next one, again, a lot of detail here, but this is one that shows you by our rig, by each individual rig, the data analysis. And that it shows you, you start off up there. This is actually the fiscal year, showing year to date. You look at our turnout time, that's how we fast, we get out of the station. Our goal is 60 seconds or less, 90% of the time. Super excited that we're meeting that. You can see that there. This also shows our total unique incidents. That's number of apparatus. We, we made 66,000 incidents where we responded to and arrived on scene. But you can see out of those, it was 108,000 different rigs that we responded to. And then the next one, you can see, we talked about turnout time, how important that is. You can see the 1,000, 108,000 incidents, how many times we met that target. And then the next one, you'll see, this is our travel time. This is important for our residents to know that any travel time from point of travel from a fire station to their incident, we could, our we could, our goal was six-minute travel time, 90% of the time. You see, we're at 80% of the time and working on areas to try to improve that. And you see on structure fire, that's at 90%. A lot of that is because the core of our structure fires happen within the core of the metro. So we actually have a quicker response time in that area. And then you can see our out-of-shoot time here also shows it by different incidents. We can focus on that. If we see an area that looks like it's low, we can really dive into that. If you'll notice, the structure fire is a little bit lower. And that's actually because we have to get dressed, fully dressed before we go out. And we have actually, if you look at the national standard in that, it's actually 80 seconds turnout time. We felt we wanted to compete at a higher level and that's why we kept our focus at 60 seconds. Next one is the operations line, line of business, 149 million, obviously the largest area of our organization. And you can see the diversity that we have within that now. Currently with the mobile integrated healthcare program that we're starting up with 20 employees, you can see the emergency medical services program. And this is not to be confused with our transport program. This is the, how much percentage of time our firefighters spend on medical calls. So that's how that's budgeted. You can see we're almost 70% of our time is on medical calls, so that's how that is budgeted there. 99.7 million for 654 employees. Our medical transport program, that's actually the transport program, 40 employees at 4.6. And then you'll see the suppression side of that, and that's fire and other activities that were involved at 44 million at 293 employees. Really excited, I forgot. Overdose kit, you know, this is something that extremely important. We talk about our community relations, community services, and what we provide. The highlight here, we have all operations, is our mobile integrated healthcare program. Again, falling under that is our overdose response team. That is something that we started last July. And you can see what we've been able to make a difference that. Major Lance Jones, we have a partnership with Hope Community Foundation. Obviously, we're still working hard with North Care, Red Rock, we have relationships with them, MOUs. But this was a program that we were excited to roll out that just told us we're moving in the right direction, but we knew we need to expand that. And that's what we're seeing with CRT, Crisis Response Team, and our CCD. But you can see since last year, we had 698 responses, overdose kits that we have here today. This provided from the state, 108 of those has been disseminated. And we have seen that those have made a difference. We've arrived on scenes where these have been utilized before we got there. So we know it is making a difference in the lives of our residents. We have 421 residents who have been offered services. We know that 28 have accepted. This is a challenging area that we're really trying to grow as we expand this program. But being able to get that data, appropriate data, where we can see that, because a lot of times we don't have that data relationship with some of our providers. And we're looking at some platforms that will help us in that area. And sometimes it's difficult as you see the continuation of the contemplation of how people are in that cycle of, on the left there, that shows you where they may be in their lifecycle process of seeking services. You know, there's a, it's a large challenge to know exactly where people are, that seeing the type of treatment they're getting. And that's the area that we're going to continue to grow as we build this program, to make sure that we have accurate data in that. When you look at up top, our goal is to prevent harm. This is, you know, we've always responded and provide the services there. But we have to look at the prevention measures on this and really grow and improve what we're doing. So prevention, that harm reduction, treatment, and then long-term recovery. I'm really excited that we're seeing that process because many times we show up, we provide care, we turn them over and we never, you know, if you say bless and release, you know, I'm excited to see this, that we can go back and really focus on seeing that continuation of care all the way through and connecting our residents that are having difficult times, challenging times, down on their luck, and make sure that we're connecting them services. What we've seen this, in this program as well, unfortunate, but we have had fatalities in our overdose response. We're also connecting those family members because it's important. Many times they're left behind, not nowhere to turn. So we're actually focused in that area too. Not only are we providing services to those clients, but we're able to provide services to those family members that are going through an extremely difficult time. Support services, this is what makes everything go, the logistical side of that. So we have logistics and facilities maintenance, 43 maintenance sites that we have to take care of, you know, and over 100 apparatus that we deal with all the time. So it takes a lot of work to make it happen. 16.2 million and 24 employees there. You can see we have 43 employees providing that to keep those 38 fire stations, over 1,000 firefighters operational and providing services every day. And then our fire dispatch, this includes the three positions if approved, would show a 2.7 million for the 19 employees in fire dispatch. Super excited for this one, Fire Station 38 that opened. I had this, Clint did tell me that, Chief, you've had this on there for your highlight for like two years, three years. Well, we worked on it very hard for several years. But when something comes to fruition, you want to highlight that. And we're super excited for that fire station being serviced. I was actually driving yesterday and heard them respond on a call. So we know we're out providing effective services to that part of the community. Fire prevention services, again, talking about preventive side, this is where we're at here. This is the preventive side of the fire department where we're trying to mitigate and reduce the risk of our, of our community and making sure that we're not responding on these incidents. But we have three work sections in there, 44 employees, 7.2 million. We have our community risk reduction. It used to be called public education. And that's important, but really we're looking at a more finite detail of community risk reduction. How do we do it at all levels? You know, they're involved, they'll be involved in some of these kits and how we do those things and how we provide services and training. You know, that, it's a lot more than fire education, it's that total community risk reduction. Then we have our fire investigations, they're working side by side with the police department to go out. We provide the investigation services on the fire, but we work together with them hand in hand. We have 12 employees in there. And then our code compliance section, that's just making sure our buildings that we go into every day, that it's safe and effective. If you look outside the door here, you have a fire marshal stamp, tells you how many people have in here. And we always make sure that we apply that. So their highlight here, this is two canvassing programs that we did around the city. This is a group effort of our public education staff, our fire operations personnel, our residential fire academy alumni association, our fire explorer program. But they went out and canvassed these areas. And you can see the areas we did, South Penn to Rancho, South Grand to Southwest 44th, North Penn, Blackweller to Northwest Tent to Northwest 12th Street. Number of homes, we did 324, smoke alarms on the first one, 69. Numbers, I'm sorry, homes entered, 69, number of smoke alarms was 214. If you look at that number of why it's off, we usually go into a home when they allow us to go in their home and we put it to code. So many times the code is one in every bedroom and outside the bedroom. So you're going to see more than one put in our residence. And you can see the numbers that we did in the, in the area in the bottom, you can see that same area. The largest goal or the biggest challenge we have is allowing people to break the threshold of their home, to allow them in their home. So we really try to work hard in there and sometimes it takes that, reapplying that effort. One strategic result, or we'll show you a BI report again, that gives you the response that we look at. But annually, the residents of Oklahoma City, even anticipating growth in outlying areas, will receive emergency responses within seven minutes or less, 70% of the time, in order to protect the lives and assess and treat emergency medical emergencies and limit damage to property. And then we, here's the report that we have. If you look at this, again, a lot of data here. This is actually our response data report. You'll see up in the upper right-hand corner is the fiscal year. You'll see the number of incidents dispatched. And then that's why you see the earlier number that was 66,000, that's how many we actually arrived on scene. That's how many has been dispatched, so not confusing the data there. The next one you'll see is that 70 minutes or less, 70% of the time. You see how many we arrived on scene, the target, so we're at 70%. The next one, you'll see our structure fire. This is actually a national standard that we, this is a travel time to a structure fire from dispatch to arrival on scene. Five minutes and 20 seconds is that, is the national standard in that. We're at 76% in that. And then the other fires, we're at 68%. So you can see a lot of data, we're really excited about these reports and believe it's going to make a huge difference in the future. This one also shows our EMS data that we, shows you our current year. Again, the total number of incidents that we were responding to. Out of those, we always want to look at how many we provide a responsive advanced life support. Our goal is 95%, we're at 92%. So we always continually evaluate that, but you can see how many were dispatched and how many responded with an ALS. And that would be our engine companies. And then you can see our overall EMS response is five minutes on that. And you can see we're at 55% because that covers the entirety of the city. Then we have three goals that we want to accomplish this year. One of the areas, we're always wanting to reduce our firefighter injuries. That's a big one, we added an athletic trainer last year due to your support. And that's been going over very well. But what we're also is really wanting to drill down deeper than that. And what we're trying to look at here is how do we reduce our OJI out-of-service time? And so we really want to drill down in that data of how long till we get an injury to initial treatment? Follow-up with the physician's appointments, definitive care, surgical intervention, till they return to work. The challenge that we have now is overtime and staffing apparatus. We really want to look at this at a finite level and say, is there areas in this process that we can improve? Is there ways we can improve that process when they're injured to make sure we get them back to work? There's also an extreme challenge of firefighters when they're injured because they want to provide services when they're disconnected from that. You know, you got to, you know, it does put a stressor on firefighters, police officers, public safety providers because they want to be back at work, that's what they do. So we want to make sure that we're following that through the process. The other is focused on our fire facility updates. We have a lot of facilities, we're rebuilding Fire Station 31, it's currently underway, super excited on that one. We're identifying land for Fire Station 13, which is at 74th and Ardi, to rebuild that fire station. Fire Station 10, looking at rebuilding that one, which is downtown 16th and Penn. And then a full remodel in Station 15, which is 126th and May. We have a lot of those projects going on, so that's going to be a real big focus this year. And we want to utilize our improved data set, as I showed you some of that example today. Obviously, we're showing work cycles and what we're currently doing. But we want to leverage those platforms to be able to create more predictability modeling. How can we look in the future and say, this is what happened in the past? Look at the future of that and be able to provide effective service response programs, those type, and be ahead of the curve and be more proactive than versus reactive. So we believe data is going to tell us the future, you know, and that we'll use every opportunity we have to leverage AI platforms if that works into that. But we really want to be that focus on the data to be able to provide those services. And with that, I'll entertain any questions, but I really appreciate the support we always receive in the fire department, public safety. And thank you for everything you do. Any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. But first, I just want to say thank you for all your work and for W. Chief Walker for overseeing this. And I love the name, the Integrated Health, because I think that is such a good point that, yeah, so often if someone's having a behavioral health crisis, or sometimes if people are just having a health crisis, sometimes it's gonna, those things are going to overlap for various reasons. So I, and I also just want to point out, and I think it kind of, you sort of pointed it out with the community risk reduction, that I've always sort of thought like the sort of harm reduction work seems to dovetail so well with what you do because you're already sort of doing it but for other types of injury, like you pointed out, illness and fire and, you know, just that, that sort of continuum of doing prevention work around education and, and those sorts of things. But then also, fire alarms are an example of a harm reduction or a risk reduction, right? The same way that maybe using Narcan is, is that it doesn't prevent the fire from happening, but it makes sure that you all know and can respond to it and as quickly as possible in the same way that Narcan can help keep people alive until the professionals get there. So I just think that's a really good pairing and excited to see what you all will kind of come of that. I am curious to know, what is the sort of, with these 20 new positions, kind of what is that capacity of coverage? Because that doesn't sound like it's going to be like a 24/7 capacity. So I'm curious to help people, know myself, but also have people kind of know what that coverage will look like.
The goal starting out is 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And we'll obviously with two on duty. I think Chief Walker, forgive me, is it with 18,000 calls a year, we averaged, looked at about two an hour? So about two, we all know it never works out perfect. You're going to have six one-hour and one-hour, you don't have any. But with those numbers, you know, we're going to evaluate it. I think in the future, you know, as we come back and hopefully we show some, some good use, it may be some areas that we want to expand and we can move the, when I say in the future, we may look at that is 9 to 11, the perfect timing. Our long-term goal would be 24-hour a day service. You know, we'll just have to look at that, obviously in the challenging year we're at in budget and the things that we're doing. And we've applied for some grants and we really want to get very active in that area. So we're going to do everything we can to fund that at a higher level. But we'll start off with two a day. And also working with the ART program, if that comes on. And when I use that, CRT, crisis response is more focused on the 911, high-acuity calls. ART would be more those low-acuity that maybe don't need law enforcement, don't need fire response, kind of the 988, if you will. And then we'll also have the 988 backup in that. So it's not just, you know, the crisis response teams. We have some other avenues that be working together to have that force multiplication and making sure we're knowing how it's working together. But that's the goal starting out. And that would be for the Crisis Call Diversion Program as well. We'd be online the same timeframe. Again, as we evaluate these programs and see where they go, leverage grants and things that are out there, which that's an area that's new for us because most of ours is related to fire specifically. So I think this gives us one that we've worked already and turned in a grant. So hopefully we can become successful in that, and we're going to continue to leverage that. Hope that answered your question in that area.
Yeah, and Chief, I just wanted to mention too, I really appreciate the effort on this. This really is a joint effort with the police department and the fire department. Chief started mentioning that earlier, that's like he's worked with Chief Gorley on this. It was really, in part at least, this goes beyond, but in part, it was part of the recommendations from the task force of what we're doing with alternative response in this. I mean, I think it takes it even a level further and engages these together. I think the decision early on was recommendation of the task force, but with the police department as well, is it makes sense to have this housed in the fire department or at least housed in another area. And the focus isn't law enforcement, but it's going to engage and work hand in hand with law enforcement on calls and when they're out there and work as quickly as they can to hand those calls off or sometimes even to divert where it doesn't have to be a law enforcement call. So I think it's really a combination of all public safety engaged in this. And I really appreciate the chiefs working together and their teams working together. And Chief Kelly and his team have done a significant amount of work getting out to find out what other communities have done, have been successful with. And I really appreciate that deep dive to make sure they identify where other communities have been successful, what they've learned from it, and tried to structure this around lessons learned in other communities as well. So great, great job on putting that together and for the budget as a whole.
I will say I'm more of the mouthpiece in that area. As said, Chief Walker has worked extremely hard in this area. Thankful for his knowledge, his work on that. But it is an opportunity, I appreciate the support we got from the city. We went to multiple cities, we went down to Houston, ACM Fairbrush went with us on that. The police department went with us. It was a great opportunity to see their call diversion program. We looked at Austin, we've worked with them, Tulsa, we've looked at Albuquerque, CARES program and Colorado, with a lot of different programs there. So we've, we've really tried to really look at a lot of different programs, Austin, and bring what we believe best serves our community together. And I think that's what we have before you today.
And I think the mid, what you mentioned before too, I'm sorry. What you mentioned before about it working with 988, this doesn't replace 988, this works with 988. And I think all of those things, all those systems working together are really what's going to serve our community best.
Well, that's what I was kind of getting ready to say as well. You know, it's the, it's the interaction between everything that's going on right now. And it's really public-facing, finally. It's been going on in the background for a very long time, but police, fire, key to home now, the crisis response teams in all the departments. And just that whole interaction, it's really becoming cohesive more so than ever before. Having been a dispatcher in the call diversion, you know, I was originally a naysayer with a lot of that when it was first presented to council, but I have, I'm a believer today and I can see the difference that it's making for our residents and for our staff and for firefighters and police officers as well, to be able to focus on the, on the things that need the most focus and need to be prioritized while still helping our residents. So thank you for that, thank you for a great presentation. Really excited to see all of these things begin to come to fruition. I did have one question. When we decided on that 9 to 11 time slot, is the intent that we will begin to collect data now to determine whether that shifts from a timing standpoint? Or was there some research done through dispatcher call logs or anything like that to set that to begin with?
You want to come up here and speak real quick, sorry. I have Chief Walker come and answer that, he's definitely a lot more in tune than I am.
Thank you.
So it's both. The current, current research shows that the peak time starts is between 9 and 11. But we are also going to start collecting data as well to see where the adjustment needs to make. There are some cities that saw an impact and whenever they went to 24-hour services, there are some that didn't see that much of a response. And everyone that we talked to, and the, this data also correlates what we see here in Oklahoma City, that's between that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had, thank you again for the presentation. And to the point of us talking about just the ways that we're
about just the ways that we were able to care for our residents. One of the things that you were talking about, the friendly competition against the firefighters and the stations with those smoke alarms, I was wondering how we could do a challenge for our council members to see how many residents we could get as far as their smoke alarms looked at, inspected or installed. So that's one thing, so challenge.
316 beep.
Yes, 316 beep. And I said that last Tuesday at one of my town halls and one of my lovely residents said, yeah, the firefighters can come to my house any day. So clearly some have been there. Hopefully they did not stay long because I know you all have to work. But I say that in fun, but that's just a relationship that you're able to have with some of our residents, which we're grateful for. So as we talked about, just those responses that you all are able to do, the safe place and the, the, where your people are able to leave their babies? I don't know what the name of it is. Maybe you can help me. Just curious to know.
Baby box.
Baby box.
Baby box, yes, ma'am.
Okay, baby box. I'm just curious to know where we are? Have we had any responses? And even with the safe place, maybe if there's a way for us to just kind of keep updated with all the things that are happening around us, how you all are able to ensure that we're taking care of our kids and our residents who need that safe place?
Two different programs. The Safe Place Program is actually a state program that we partner with. Obviously, you have different areas. A fire station is a safe place where if there's a, they can come to that location, we can connect them to services. The Baby Box Program, we put our first one in at Fire Station 21. We haven't had to date a response, which obviously is a good thing, but the whole, the whole thing, if we're not, again, we don't want to be reactive, we want to be proactive. And then we're looking at Fire Station 12 and, which is there on Martin Luther King. That is one we're adding in that, we're working currently, Public Works on that, Fire Station 28, which is the southeast part of the city off 74th and Anderson Road. And that's working, when we've worked with experts in that area, what they look like is they always talk about access. You know, when you're talking about areas, you're really looking at access because it may not always be someone in that area, maybe someone that's driving down the highway. And they have other states that have responded in different parts of the country to do that. And we're just looking for the, the best way that we can serve our community, make sure that we can save a life. And that's what we're looking at. Those are the two programs and how they work and what we're working on currently.
How are those funded? The baby boxes?
The baby box, we get donations. We've been fortunate, we're working with, what's the, do you remember the provider?
Foster and Sweet Dreams.
Sorry, I keep going back here. There's a lot of information, I apologize. Foster and Sweet Dreams, they have donated the box. We pay for the installation out of our building program because we believe it's that important, you know, and we partner with them in that area, but we've been fortunate to have those donated. And then once you go from there, a lot of it's just internal services that we keep it going. It does take some IT staff to, because it has a automated call to dispatch, it has some, we test it all the time, but once you get that in place, it's just maintenance. And we believe it's a very good program and it's worthwhile dollar spent of our residents' dollars.
What is it, the cost to install one in a building? I mean, take the...
About 24,000, is that what? We did have some, again, Fire Station 21, we had to build a sidewalk. Most of the other ones, we probably won't have to do that much, but about 24,000. When you look at our portion, which is about half of that and the portion that's donated. Because everything we do takes an architect and all of that, which is important. Any other, any other questions?
Yes, Chief.
Yes.
First, so I've already said this in private to several of you and I'll just say it now. Did I say it? I've already said it in private, I'll say it now in public, so I want to make sure I was being clear. Thank you for the just intense level of thoughtfulness that you all have put into crafting the crisis response team and then thinking about the work that will happen with the alternative response. And so I just really want to say that in public because it's, as someone who is very impatient and stubborn, you know, this work began back in summer of '20 and as you've heard me say, for four budget years, you know? But I think in some ways, the amount of due diligence, visiting the other municipalities, and I remember in the rest, the community policing resolution, it specified best practices that we needed to dig into other municipalities and borrow from them and expand upon it. So you all did that, and I think that's commendable. So, good work, and I look forward to seeing that come online.
Thank you.
Not only am I impatient and stubborn, I am very competitive. And I, mhm, mhm. And so I was earlier in your presentation noticing you were hanging out in, I believe it's Ward 6, around Blackwelder and 10th and 12th. And that's fine, the Honorable Councilwoman is a good person. I'm interested, and we can talk offline about this, but you know, my neighborhood has many old structures. We're about to celebrate the 100-year centennial of what was Spanish Village, Paseo. I think a lot of those structures probably need a revisiting. So I would like sometime between now and when Ward 2 has their bond, what would you call it, outreach later this summer? I'd like to have a time, now this is a draft, but I'd like to have a time between now and then, I anticipate this being late July, August, but I'd like to invite you into the Paseo and including my old structure, because I don't, I think you and I've talked about it, I don't think that we have the proper regulation that you've just described. And I'd like to use that as a model and heading into the bond where we would have, our bond meeting where I would be inviting the other neighborhood associations, I'd like to build a model for them, right? This is how you do it. Now, game on. Like I want to, mhm, like I want to go neighborhood by neighborhood, letting them know, and we will win against you all. I want to get as, that's right, that's right. It's an Ares, Ares Fire. But I want to get as many Ward 2 neighborhoods knowledgeable about this. I want them to see it for themselves, what we can accomplish in Paseo. And I want to try and, I don't know, we can figure out the parameters, but I think it's as many neighborhoods or maybe it's units installed, we can figure out what that is. But I think you'll have people in Paseo opening your doors to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
First, I would like, I did call out Deputy Chief Walker and his great work, but also Major Harrison with the Police Department has been instrumental in this program as well. And we talked about the partnership. You know, we, we have to work together on alternative response. We talked about the Crisis Response Program and really appreciate Major Harrison. Obviously, there's other personnel, but I want to call him out as the work that he's done with Chief Walker. I appreciate that. And for what you said on the other, I've got a new Fire Marshal here that would love to help you out in any way he can.
Hey, maybe we check in, council, about a year from now, see how many units during your presentation you got then. But I, I plan on, I'd like by this bond meeting to have some photos of our work together. But again, I think it would be an incentive that I can post on social media to say, because I just think this is so important, we've got to better connect our people to services and this can be a very real tangible, non-abstract thing. So, see y'all next year.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
So next up, we have Chief Gorley on giving his budget presentation. This will be his last budget presentation as he's announced his retirement. And we were talking about that before, it's like budget presentations aren't generally something people look forward to. So, so this may not be something he misses as much as some of the other things that he will. I really appreciate his leadership and his work and just all the things that we've done, the way the department's continued to grow under his leadership. And as we've gone through the task force recommendations and all, and even just like what we were talking about with the Fire Department and the presentation on this alternative response of how much the Police Department has been engaged in this and been a part of this, and even increasing their own training on mental health response. So looking forward to hearing the budget presentation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I'll just start by saying too, we're having some of the same fond issues that the Fire Department had. It's their fault, so not ours. But no, it's always when you put something together somewhere and then you try to transfer it over, it always happens. I don't think it'll affect the content or anything, but hopefully we'll be able to get through that without any issues. Also want to start by, by thanking those that put, put this together, my public, my planning and research staff, especially Liliana here, she did a lot of work on it, and Sergeant Elizabeth Carter did a lot of work as well, some work on weekends and things like that. And of course, all of my command staff, my business manager, Mike Stru, for identifying the needs and goals and looking at what we've done too, not just what we're going to do within this budget year, but why the money is so important and what we're funding and what we're doing, because I think that's important as well in how we serve our community. So I'll start in our first slide with the mission statement and our vision statement. So the mission of the Oklahoma City Police Department is to deliver exceptional police services to our community with integrity, compassion, accountability, respect and equity, which is our core values. And then our vision is for the Police Department is to ensure Oklahoma City is one of the safest cities in the country through strong community relationships, innovative strategies and a healthy, well-trained, or healthy, well-trained police officers. And you'll see some of that as we talk about wellness and some of the other things that we continue to strive and move forward in, in that area. So our departmental organization chart, just to break down there in front of you, but one of the things I want to point out before getting into that too much is that our current staffing numbers, we're at 1,100 sworn and 400 and, 446 professional staff. The 1,100 sworn is pretty significant because we're starting to rise back up out of the deficits that we saw in the mass exodus of 2020 and 21 and where our retirements exceeded our employments coming in. We're starting to come out of that a little bit now. And our recruiting staff, our training staff has done an excellent job. I'll talk more about that later in the presentation. But just in the fact that, you know, we're running three academies a year and keeping up a little bit more with that attrition, so hopefully that trend continues. And I know last year we had a net gain. We're hoping this year that gain will even be higher of those that we're bringing in versus those that are retiring and leaving. But with our breakdown of our organization, we've got five bureaus, and I'll talk about just briefly those and the deputy chiefs that are over those. So our Administration Bureau is Deputy Chief Beshina Butler. Our Investigations Bureau is Deputy Chief Ron Basie. Our Operations Bureau North, which is our, one of our patrol divisions that covers the north side of the city, and also our Community Relations is Deputy Chief Jason Clifton. And then Operations Bureau South, which covers our South Patrol Divisions, and our Dispatch Center is Deputy Chief Bobby Tompkins. And then our Special Operations Bureau, which again, I'll go into more detail of each of these, will be Deputy Chief Brian Jennings. So the major changes that we have this year, reductions in professional staff, we have eight vacant positions and one position that's being moved over to the City Finance Office. And then our subsidy to 911 Communications, which I'll explain a little bit more about later. And then increases in that professional staff, six positions and a new storage facility for our large equipment. One of the things we've been trying to do to bridge any gap in services and get more police officers out doing the things that they need to do as officers is increasing that professional staff to do some of those tasks that, excuse me, in the past that we've had law enforcement officers, sworn officers do that, that really don't require someone with a CLEAT certification to do those tasks. And we found that we can be much more efficient in doing that, but also too, bringing those folks in is a lot easier than trying to hire a police officer, run through the academy, and you're looking at at least a year, maybe a little bit more before that officer is out on their own. So, so bringing in professional staff to fill those gaps has been very helpful. So the proposed budget breakdown is in this slide, and it shows that the operating budget is just over 245 million. Capital and non-operating, just over 53 million, less our transfers to city funds with a total department budget of 285,957,954. As you can see, operations, which is patrol, takes up the majority of that, but that's your, your first responders that are out there taking the calls, and that's where the majority of our employees are, because that is the most critical task that we have as a police department. Budgets by source, so the general fund accounts for 60% of our overall, overall budget and the most of it. Then you get the police sales tax fund and then a breakdown there in the MAPS 4 use tax fund, communications and other, and then capital improvements, which when you talk about general fund and sales tax, that primarily pays for the personnel expenditures, some of the services and equipment. The MAPS 4 use tax is fleet replacement. We've been very fortunate with that. We have one of the best fleets in the country. When I talk to other major city chiefs in different areas around the country, they struggle with maintaining a fleet. And Oklahoma City, I think that's probably even more important because of the size of our city. When you cover 621 square miles and you're running a 24-hour operation where your officers are going all the time and sometimes driving great distances during their shift, that equipment becomes very critical in making sure that we can respond and meet the needs of the, of the city. So budget by classification, again, personal services takes up the majority of our budget. That's our people, that's our salaries, benefits, and 70% of our budget goes to that. When you talk about services, things like contracts, utilities, chargebacks for IT and fleet services, supplies and equipment, that's everything from what we wear in our uniforms to, you know, fleet replacement to, you know, just everything that takes to keep the day-to-day operation running. Capital is specialized equipment need, needs major facilities, major repairs. You know, we have a lot of buildings and things that require maintenance and upkeep and in Oklahoma weather, we know that can be a, a challenge as well. So that's, that's part of that there. And then transfers will include that 911, excuse me, 911 fund subsidy and legal services. So we'll talk about now our lines of business, and the first one we'll talk about is administration. This is our executive leadership. That includes the Office of the Chief, the Office of Finance, our Wellness Unit, logistical support, risk management, planning and research, building management, our supply room, police IT, legal services and fleet management. Human resources in the exec, and professional standards and public information is also under administration as well. When you look at where the breakdown is of the funding in this category, executive leadership takes up the most of that with 54 positions, and then human resources at 17, professional standards at nine, and public information at 10. Some things I want to highlight within administration is first of all, our officer wellness. We know from our task force and as well as the 21CP recommendations, that officer wellness is a priority and should be. Having healthy, well-trained officers means that we'll have a healthy response to our community and be better able to serve. One of the things that I want to highlight that we implemented in the past year is, is our Magnus app. And actually, we implemented it the year before, but we really got, got it going strong in the past fiscal year. This started with a group, the Magnus Group does leadership training around the country, and we contacted, contracted with them a few years ago to do a leadership class. And as part of that, they started looking at wellness and had told us about an app that they had worked on and rolled out into certain areas of the private sector and the public sector, sector as well, but they had not done a major city police department before. So we were very interested in this. It was about the time too, that we, they were talking about this, that we rolled out the Gage survey. The Gage survey is very good, but in an organization our size, it's very hard to drill down into where those issues are. And you don't just want to blanket address an issue that may not be something that's going on throughout the department. So Magnus was able to take the data from the Gage survey and basically show us where we had issues that needed work within the organization and even drill down to maybe a specific shift in a specific division or a work unit, you know, or is it a non-s sworn area such as, you know, our professional staff and dispatch? And so we were very interested in that and excited about that. And this app has just continued to grow and help us address issues within the organization. For example, too, some of the things we can do through the Magnus app is roll out content related to health and wellness. We have specific content too, that we can actually direct to a certain group. There's been 12 videos that have been released fairly recently that are just for our new recruits coming in. So they, through the app, they can see these videos and receive information about the stresses that they're going through, the academy, and just all of that that it does, you know, with their family. The thing about the Magnus app too, is it's not just for the officers, it's for the families as well and all of our wellness. That's, that's the main goal of what they try to reach. They don't just target the employees, but their families as well. One of the things too, that we rolled out in the last fiscal year that is unique to agencies around the country is what we call Wellness Administrative Leave. What we found is when you have an employee that has been dealing with stress and maybe navigating PTSD, sometimes not even realizing that, is it starts to have a significant impact and takes a toll on them as an individual in their work life. Oftentimes, they don't figure that out until they're in a position where they're in crisis and they really need help. And how that usually manifests itself is they start using leave and avoiding work... And how that usually manifests itself is they start using leave and avoiding work, but it's not something that's easy to pick up because it can happen in such a gradual manner. What happens is those officers or those professional staff end up running out of leave when they get to a point where they need help. So then that becomes a barrier to getting help. And sometimes too, just being away and having to use your leave in order to get help can be a barrier as well. So we introduced this to allow us to, allow our employees to get the long-term care that they need that sometimes requires intensive thirty, sixty, ninety days at a facility. Our wellness team has identified two facilities and I think they're looking at some others in different parts of the country that have been very successful. One of the, the caveats to this is an employee cannot find themselves in trouble and then avail themselves of this wellness leave. That's another sort of carrot that we dangle to, to make our employees want to use this and avail themselves of this long-term care for, for their wellness. And so, for example, if an employee gets a DUI, they would not be able to avail themselves of wellness administrative leave. We want them to utilize this leave before they get in trouble, before they reach that bottom and have that turning point. So far, all of the officers and the non-s sworn professional staff that have availed themselves of this program, we've had a one hundred percent success rate and allowing them the time to go get that long-term care, and they've come back healed and it's saved families and it's saved careers and it's saved the employees. So it's been a great program. And just in our wellness program alone, over five hundred employees have been assisted. And when I say that five hundred, it's really probably more because sometimes they assist those employees in more than one area and then they're also assisting their families. Because you often find too, when you have someone that's struggling with PTSD or stress, has an impact on their family as well. So with media relations, we, we had nine thousand eighty-six media requests completed. Those are becoming significantly greater increase because of video, body worn camera, in-car camera. And just the nature of the work we do, we're seeing a lot more requests. We made almost three thousand social media posts. And our most popular social media that we have is through Crime Stoppers. We get a lot of involvement in the community in helping us apprehend criminals and people that are, are, you know, doing harm in the community. We've, we've seized over two point seven million dollars in illegal drugs, two hundred and thirty-four arrests made, eighty weapons recovered, and fifty-one fugitives located as a result of Crime Stoppers and the feedback from our community. So some other things to highlight within administration that we're working on as part of this budget year. First is a desk officer reporting system. So we started several years ago with what we call our property crime specialist. And these were professional staff that we hired that would be able to go out and respond to calls that aren't a high priority and don't require a police officer response. But they can take a report, they can collect evidence, and it's been a help to our officers in relieving some of that burden and for us not having to respond to so many calls. What we noticed too is with technology and upgrades that we've made to our records management system, it opens the door and the pathway for what we call a desk reporting system. And this is where a resident could, may have something that occurred such as a vehicle break-in where there is no physical evidence and they just need to make a report and maybe it'll help us identify trends in an area or even identify a suspect. But in something like that, where there is no suspect information or evidence to collect, we may not need to send an officer out. So the resident can actually get online, make the report themselves through a review process we have through records management. That report can be reviewed, assigned to an investigator for any follow-up as needed. And then the resident can also obtain the report for insurance purposes or whatever they need. Other cities have, have done this. I've actually availed myself of the, of this process in another city. And it works very well. And they, again, the resident's making the report, frees up officers. We're hoping is that it'll allow us to get rid of, we have to have a report taker at each division now that takes reports over the phone to help alleviate some of those responses. So we're very excited about this. It's something that, that's been in the works a long time. We're hoping to roll this out around July of twenty twenty-four. And again, it should help not only better serve our residents, but keep officers more focused on the higher level crimes that they need to respond to. Another thing too, our quartermaster program, this is something we're looking at implementing during this, this fiscal year. And as you can imagine, when you have a department the size of ours with the amount of employees, we have a lot of equipment, equipment that gets damaged, it's hard to keep track of. When employees leave the organization and they have to turn that equipment in, there's no real good process in place right now for making sure that all gets collected. A lot of times our employees, and I'm finding this out, that you've got to run a lot of different places to turn your stuff in. So with the quartermaster program, that will allow us to be more efficient and to better provide the equipment that our officers need if it gets damaged or anything like that. And so we're starting this program as soon as we can get the person hired and in position with our recruits and as we order their equipment and, and figure out, you know, how we track and do all of that and do that more efficiently, then expand the program out from there. A storage facility for specialized vehicles, this is something that we'll be working on during this fiscal year. As you can imagine, when you have a city of our size that continues to grow and, and also special events, we're getting ready to build a new arena, a new stadium facility, and there's lots of entertainment venues that are starting to pop up around the community. It takes a lot of equipment for us to provide security for all of those events. And that type of equipment doesn't get a whole lot of use and it also can't sit outside for extended period of times. And what I mean by a whole lot of use is it, it's usually stationary when we use it. It's not like a patrol car that's responding all the time. So you have to have someplace to store that. And so that's what we'll be working on. And I think the most important thing to point out is, a good example is right now, the last time the Thunder were in the playoffs, we had to rely a lot on our federal, state, local partners. We still rely on them for help and intelligence and things like that when you have these large-scale events, especially something like the Thunder playoffs, I mean, the NBA playoffs as those advance into the finals. And so now, what we've been able to do over the last several years is build that infrastructure up with this equipment. So as the Thunder progress and they eventually win a championship, that we know they will, we will be ready for that and be prepared. And, and that's a very good feeling. And again, it doesn't negate our state, federal, local partners. We're still going to be relying on them for help, but we have the ability to not only handle that event that's going on downtown, but to respond to other events as well. And we haven't had that in the past. And so it's very significant. And again, it's through the support of our community and, and this council that's enabled us to do that. So investigations is our next line of business. This includes, you know, our detectives and the person crimes, the video technician specialist, bilingual unit, property crimes, victim services, and then our investigation support, which is our laboratory support service, our property crime specialist, crime scene investigations, and property management unit. Investigations positions account for the most of that, which is the one hundred and forty-three positions. And then support is another hundred and one positions. So we'll talk about a little bit about some of the things and how it breaks down there. First of all, I want to point out our homicide solve rate at eighty-eight percent. One of the things that's significant about that is we're one of the few major cities that we do not count a homicide as solved until the district attorney has accepted charges. Other cities do that a little bit different. They may, you know, have higher solve, or solve rates or appear that way. But when you're counting, you know, when that case is completely worked, you have a suspect and that they've been charged, it's very significant to be at eighty-eight percent. So that's, that's very good, very good work by those investigators and the rest of the teams that support them. Our victim services, they served three thousand sixty-one individuals for the last fiscal year. And the majority of those were domestic violence. That was the majority of those. And as you know, in Oklahoma, domestic violence continues to be an issue. We continue unfortunately to be in the top two or three each year in domestic violence and domestic violence-related homicides. So having victim services be able to help navigate those folks through a very difficult time is very important. Total persons crimes cleared fifty, at fifty-eight percent and property cases cleared at thirty-two percent. I'll show you a little bit more on the slides, on the next slide. And then this is something that's really amazing to me is our lab. Our lab is very advanced in what they do compared to not only labs in the state, but around the country. And they do it in a facility that is really probably outdated, which is a hope going forward with bond issues and things as we look at that we'll be able to expand that. But they do a very good job. And as you see, they've conducted over forty-one thousand tests in the past year of different types of evidence that's been collected and how they do that. So that's pretty amazing. One thing I want to point out too, because it's not, it's very important to this lab and that support, when you talk about homicide cases is so far this year, we've had twenty-seven homicides and a solve rate of ninety-two point six percent. So that's, that's, that, that really shows the improvements we're getting in the lab. There's some other things too with the real-time information center and how those investigators all work together with patrol officers and with our violent crimes team to help bring those cases to a resolution. I think is why we're seeing these improvements over the years. So just some, when you talk about persons crimes cleared, you can see, you know, we've been in the rise, on the rise of the amounts that we've been clearing in-person crimes. In-person crimes, again, includes anything where you have a victim that's, that's a human being. So that can be assaults, child abuse, kidnappings, domestic violence, homicides, robbery, and sex crimes. We're projected for this fiscal year to have a three and a half percent increase in persons crimes cleared. So some things to talk about during this budget year that are improvements in investigations and things that we're going to see rolling out. First thing that's very exciting, and I'm not a scientist, so I hope you don't have a lot of questions about rapid DNA. But the best thing I can explain to it is, is when DNA technology first started rolling out, it was a very cumbersome process. It took a lot of lab hours and, and very tedious work for those, for those lab techs, technicians to actually come up with a DNA profile and it was very costly. As time has gone on and technology has improved, the training in those, in those technicians has improved, the timeframe and the cost has come down. Well, we're, we're very excited now that rapid DNA is rolling out and this is something that is actually being led by the OSBI. They're the ones that are, are charged with that in the state. But Oklahoma City and Tulsa are the only other two labs that will be allowed to participate in this program, in this technology and have the technology for rapid DNA. What that will allow us to do is basically those property crime specialists and our CSI that are all non-s sworn professional staff, they, they also have a lot of training and, and most of them have master's degrees in, in, you know, in the science behind this. And so they can perform this, this lab work on this rapid DNA. So if they collect evidence at a scene, they could theoretically bring it back to our lab and perform a test, have the results within ninety minutes is my understanding. Now I believe there's still a verification process that would go along after that. But if you have, you know, a suspect or someone you're looking for and you're trying to make your case, obviously if you have DNA, that makes it even that much better. So we're very excited about this. The best part of this is, is it will be funded by the state. We're just waiting on the legislature to work through that process. But we've gone ahead and trained our people so that we're ready to go. So when the state's ready and OSBI is ready, we'll be able to move forward in this. So we're very excited about that. Increased property managed unit storage capacity. So when I first took over as chief, I remember, you know, meeting with everybody and kind of looking at the issues, how do we improve, what are some areas are. And every path I turned, it said, we've got too much property in our property room. And the solution was, let's build another property room. And so I looked at that a little bit differently. We've got too much property in there. We need to start getting rid of some things that are there that aren't evidence. And so we've done a very good job working with the municipal councillor's office and some others to, to do just that. But one of the things too, that we've worked on in the last fiscal year was the increasing the capacity by changing the layout and how we use storage containers and other things. And they've been able to do that. And we have just over three hundred and eleven thousand items stored in that property room. And we've been able to be more efficient with that now and again, get rid of things that we don't necessarily need and keep that process working, but also become more, more efficient with what we're storing. One of the things too, that I want to point out, Master Sergeant Larry Sanders, one of the officers over there assigned to the property room, has been working with our vendor Axon that has developed our records management system. And they're coming up with a, a very unique and new property management tracking system that's going to help us be more efficient in processing that evidence and that information from the time it's booked in to the time it's needed as evidence for the case and to the time we don't need it and it can, it can be released. And you have to understand too, that there's a lot of items that get booked in that property room that are released very quickly because it may be something found that someone lost or, or recovered that, that had been stolen from a crime victim. And so they're constantly processing that information out. We want that to be as efficient as possible to serve our residents in case it's something that they really need, such as a wallet, you know, money, things like that, that they don't want to be without for an extended period of time. So we're very excited about that and the fact that all of this will help bring our property room even more in compliance with best practices and national standards. The last thing that I want to talk about in investigations in this segment moving forward is our organized retail crime task force and Senate Bill number fourteen fifty. The task force was put together by the governor and it also falls under the Attorney General's Office. We have several members of our department that will be sworn in and part of this task force. And it allows us to work these cases because what you find is with organized retail crime, it doesn't just affect Oklahoma City. It's a statewide and nationwide problem with these groups that are very organized in what they do and they steal and it causes a, a big impact on businesses all around the country. And we're talking billions of dollars in loss. And so with the ability now to better prosecute these crimes and better laws in place to address not your person that's going in and shoplifting a couple of items, but these organized groups that are stealing millions of dollars oftentimes in product all around the country, it's going to help us to better target that. So we're, we're excited about that. We had a seat at the table with one of our employees was able to be a part of that task force and provide information. It's also, if you think about too, it's really helped us in targeting the catalytic converter thefts. We've seen a significant reduction in those based on not only changes in the laws, but some individuals that we were able to arrest with the cooperation of several agencies, not only around the state, but around the country, and tie them to a lot of these thefts and it made it a lot more difficult for that to occur. So that, that's something that will be very good and I think will definitely help the businesses in our community. So now we'll go to operations again, which is patrol, the next line of business. Nine one one communications, youth services, crime prevention and awareness. And as, as I said before, patrol takes up the majority of the budget in this area at seven hundred and fifty-seven positions. And then nine one one communications at eighty-nine, youth services programs fifty-four, crime prevention and awareness programs at about seven positions. So when you talk about, you know, operations, one of the things too, you have to highlight is our youth services and how those programs have grown. If you remember twenty-one CP, they were very pleased with what we were doing and wanted to make sure that we maintain that momentum and continue to grow as our community grow, grew. So there's been over eighty-two thousand youth that have been a part of these programs in the past year. And, and most of those come through our police athletic league. That, that by far is our fastest growing program. So just to highlight some of the programs that we have, we have the juvenile intervention program, FACT, youth enrichment services, youth leadership academy, and then of course, the police athletic league. We also added school resources, resource officers this year to the Moore Public School System, which now has upped our SRO staff to twenty-nine officers. And this also within operations is our mental health and our crisis response and mental health calls at seventeen, just over seventeen thousand is what we're projecting for the year. I've got another slide. I'll, I'll put that in a little bit of perspective here in just a second. Our emergency calls service still over one million and life-threatening calls or priority ones are at twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty. So as we go into the next slide, this is probably one of the most significant things and it goes in line as we heard Chief Kelly speak about the, the alternative response and what we're doing. And I think it's starting to have an impact. So far, you know, in just this year, we've seen a twenty-five percent reduction in the amount of calls that our patrol officers are responding to related to mental health and that's significant. And as you can see, we're predicting if we stay on this current path, a thirty percent reduction overall this fiscal year in mental health calls that our officers respond to. So I think that's very significant. The, the mental health calls, you know, as you know, I, I don't think there's any way that, that we'll ever get completely out of that business just because we're the only organization that's there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There's still a safety component there sometimes in this, but the less time, times that you have a police officer interact on a mental health call, I think is always going to be better. And that's the goal that we're striving for as well. I want to take a moment and I'd like to have a couple of people come up. I want to take a moment and I'd like to have a couple of people come up and speak to some of the things that we're doing in the community and how their role in that is. So I've got Danielle Smith here from Hope and Lauren Stover from the Oklahoma County Crisis Intervention Center to talk about how our partnership is working and growing and what we're doing to help better meet the needs of our community. So Danielle, if you want to go ahead and come up first and then Lauren, if you'll follow.
We're really excited from Hope Community Services to come and talk about our partnership that we have with law enforcement. You heard earlier that we also have partnerships with the fire department and out of those 400-plus responses on the opioid response team, our staff was there in that partnership. Working with Oklahoma City Police Department, I personally have been working with them since 2021. My journey with them started when I was working with the Champions Mobile Response Team. As I was hiring for that team, I went on response in many of those and throughout my time even hiring, I still responded. And so I got to have a first row seat to all of those values that we were talking about. A first row seat to, many of the people are in this room that we spent countless hours working on policy and procedure with, working with having a shared language, a shared perspective. And while we want to be really transparent and upfront in the fact that there have been challenges, it's a very complex position to be in within the community and in partner with law enforcement, we hold each other accountable as well as in co-response. So with that being said, as we worked with mobile crisis teams, we also now, in my current role, working with Hope Community Services, we have a, a urgent recovery center as well, where we, in the last calendar year, saw approximately 1,500 initial responses to get people stabilized. Our goal will always be to meet people in the least responsive way, making sure that we can help them to get to where they can play, learn, grow and thrive within the community. So in that, that urgent recovery, what it allows law enforcement to do in partnership with us is to come within a few minutes. So they get them within the Sallyport. We are able to see whether or not they need those additional medical services or if they're able to be in one of our recliners. We don't measure by beds because it's a more short-term stabilization. And so we have really been able to see that work very efficiently, help people to get to outpatient services and be able to get back to their work and their family. But not only in the crisis lens have I been able to work with Oklahoma City Police Department because we, we have worked in partnership with that youth services, with the POW League. We've also been able to address and work in training and in services and workshops with all of those school resource center officers. We work in the academies, so we talk to people before they even get into patrol positions to talk about what it looks like to interact with treatment and how they have options when they come into having calls with people in behavioral health crisis. Beyond that, we work in continual CIT positions and cross-training. And this is a true partnership. So it means that we do work with the police in the, in the sense that we do co-respond and work in 988 and work in 911, but we train together in a lot of ways because our initial thought process and our initial goal is safety. Safety for the people who are seeking services, safety for people who are working in the treatment space and safety for our law enforcement partners. One other thing that I'd like to mention is that I have been invited to work on a quality assurance work group where we look at people who are frequent faces that are utilizing the 911 system. We also work to come up with solutions and best practices on how to work best with those people for long-term outcomes that not only meet them in a place of crisis, but meet them in a place of prevention, meet them in a place of how do we get in touch with families that we see are struggling and get them into the case management and treatment services that are desperately needed. So again, thank you for hearing my experience with law enforcement and I'm very proud to be here. Thank you, Chief, for inviting me.
Thank you, Danielle. Appreciate that.
I'm vertically challenged, so I'm going to bring that down. Hello, I am Lauren Stover. I'm the director for our crisis centers here in Oklahoma County. I'm currently building my budget, so I appreciate the opportunity to stop staring at that and stare at someone else's budget. I also have a similar perspective of working with law enforcement. I started in community-based services with Red Rock and I had a front seat in a patrol car with AOT, meeting those in our community who were the most vulnerable, not able to get engaged in services because of the severity of their mental health and riding along to get them engaged in those services as quickly and efficiently as possible and building that partnership on that side. And then moving into my current role with the crisis centers, it is no secret that there used to be a not very strong relationship with the crisis centers and our law enforcement officers. Whenever I moved into my role a couple of years ago, that's one of the first things that I looked at, as well as the department wanted me to look at, was how do we build that partnership and make it stronger because ultimately that's impacting the people in our community and that's who matters the most in all of this, is how do we get those people into our doors more effectively and more efficiently and give them the services that they need. And so we sat down and had a lot of hard conversations on both sides of the table and made sure that our law enforcement officers had a true no wrong door policy of being able to come in regardless of what the situation was. And we are bringing that person in to the facility and making sure law enforcement was able to get back to the community as quickly as possible. And throughout the past couple of years, there has continued to be challenges, but we continue to have a open-door communication of facing those and seeing what we can do to continue to improve those. And with the data of that, I believe that we have had a lot of success over the past couple of years. Law enforcement used to be our third referral source, looking at that we have four different referral sources that we look at. They used to be our third. In calendar year 2023, after we had that big driving force of prioritizing our law enforcement folks, they are our number one referral source for folks coming into the crisis center. We had 1,464 referrals from law enforcement with OKCPD being our 70% of that. We served over 4,800 folks in calendar year 2023. And for fiscal year '24, as of current, we have had 1,100 folks referred by law enforcement with majority of that being from OKCPD as well. So we continue to see law enforcement being the ultimate referral and that is in part because of the efforts that we have had on both parties of being able to prioritize that relationship to meet the need of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. As, as Danielle and Lauren both said, it is a work in progress. It's, it's not something that we're sitting back and going, we're done. We're a long ways from that. The Quality Assurance Program that Danielle mentioned, that's something that's fairly new just within the last few months. And it's, it's helping us figure out where those gaps are, how we can better respond. If we did respond to something and we fell a little short, how do we train our officers to do better the next time? And that's, that's a process that, again, I think is working very well and getting us to where we need to be. One of the things Lauren and I talked about this yesterday evening is that I, I think as we move forward with this, we have to be very cautious in thinking about what we do because we're, we're doing so much that it has the tendency to become fragmented. And we got to stop thinking in terms of what we're doing and what that person that is on the other end of the phone that has either a family member in crisis or they're in crisis themselves, what are we doing to make sure when they pick up that phone, they know what number to call to start that process? How do they initiate that? And when you look at, you know, Chief Kelly and I, we've talked a lot about their response. I'm very excited about that because it's the most integrated response we have because they're on our CAD, they're on our radio system, they're going to be out there, even though it's starting off in these certain hours, it's going to be an extreme help. But I think a lot of that is going to be, they're going to show up, the officers can go, but you're still going to have that team there and figuring out what those next steps are going to be. And I think that's what we have to do. And we went through those same growing pains with housing and the homeless outreach and the Key to Home Program and how we're doing that. And now we have an office in the, in the building here where all of those resources are in one place, including our homeless outreach. They're all working together and there's a systematic approach to do that. And the, the residents in the community know, if we have this problem, we contact the Action Center and get that started. So that's what we have to figure out in all of this is what's going to start this process and how is, is that going to work? Is it going to be 988? We know people are still going to call 911 and I think that's some of the risk in going forward with this that we really have to be careful of and, and be very calculated in planning and how we do that. And with folks like this working with us, I know we're going to be successful and, and that's what it's going to take is all of us coming together, but making sure the right message is getting put out to the public as well. I don't know if you have any questions for them before I let them go, and I appreciate your time being here today, but if you do, feel free. If not, we'll let them get back to their jobs. All right. Thank you all, and thank you again for being here. So back in our line of business and operations with emergency calls service, as you can see, these have just dramatically grown over the years, but we're, we're projecting a small decrease this year. We're hoping through some things and policies that we're implementing that, you know, a lot of those calls will be diverted, the, the desk reporting software, the ability of 988 to become more widespread and, and more what people call in mental health crisis hopefully will help us reduce those even more. We have had some success in staffing our 911 center and getting more people there and in the training process. It's a long process, too, for them, but we're getting there and doing better. So hopefully that will just continue to improve over the next year, several years. Priority one calls, these are the calls that require an immediate response to a person's, they're, they're in danger, they're in a life-threatening situation, or it could be a crime in progress in which a, there, there could be significant property loss or major damage. And so these calls have, have pretty much stayed the same around the 21,000 mark, but you know, our response times to those, you know, our goal is to get to those from the time that caller's received to getting an officer out there in nine minutes and 30 seconds. And, and we'd like to do that at least within 90% of the time, but we've been falling short of that the last several years. We've been in the 60 to 70% range. But again, that's staffing. The more officers we can get out on the street, the more we can place them around the city. And also, too, something that has happened, as you are well, well aware, is Oklahoma City is not as rural in the outlying areas as it once was. So used to, you know, we, we could make those calls and respond to those because there weren't as many folks living in those areas. And especially when you talk about the development out west, that's why it becomes more, even more critical as we plan for the future that we're putting a briefing station somewhere more out west in that Canadian County area. And we have plans to do that, you know, in, as part of our future planning down the road. But I think that's only going to help us, again, is the more, the greater increased staffing and then also, you know, as we grow in our facilities and being able to put officers in those areas where the city's starting to grow outward. So some other things within operations that, that we'll talk about that I think are very important. We're, this is a brand-new program that just started. It came from some folks in the community that approached us that we're very excited about. It's the POW Youth Business Academy. This is an entrepreneurial program for at-risk youth partnered with, it's called KidVation Global. And this, our first one started April 15th and it'll run through May 16th. 25 kids were selected in their fifth through 12th grade. OKC Respond Program paid for the curriculum. We currently have seven business owners and five officers who'll lead and teach the curriculum as we go through this. And it kind of culminates with, you know, these young kids going through this program, they're going to come up with some idea, way to be an entrepreneur, and then they'll pitch it to these business leaders, kind of like Shark Tank. And then there's grants and other things that will help phases of this. So if they come up with a really good idea and they want to pursue that, they'll be able to do that. And so we're not real sure how this is all going to look at the end, but we're very excited about it. I know the kids that are going through it are having a great time and very excited about it as well, so more to come on that later. But that's something new that we're working through in this fiscal year. Our increase in CIT certified officers. As you know, CIT International wants us, recommends in best practices that you limit the amount of CIT officers that you have within your department to those that really have a passion and want to do that. But that doesn't mean we can't train our officers in the CIT program. And so that's what we've been doing, is increasing that amount of training. And so one of the things that has helped us with that is we hired a new CIT coordinator that is a non-sworn professional staff member. We kind of cheated on that a little bit. Some of you may know Lori Osborne. She worked with the Department of Mental Health through a grant program with them for many years. She's, she was very involved in our CIT program. Well, she retired, but we didn't want to let her go, so we brought her back in and she's now our CIT coordinator and doing a great job in helping us increase and, and just grow the program. Our 911 dispatchers have received eight hours in-house CIT training, so now they're, they're better trained in how to respond to these calls when they, when they get the 911 call. We have 458 sworn employees who have received the 40-hour CIT course. And as we move forward, all of our academies, the new recruits coming in, they will get the full CIT course as well. The $1.1 million savings in subsidy to 911, you've heard some talk about that. Basically, that came about through increased fees on cell phones and landline bills through the, through the general fund subsidy. The House Bill 1590, the Hayden Fleming Memorial Act, it's went into effect November 1, 2023. So we've, we've started receiving this funding and it's actually coming in a little bit ahead of what we projected. But the purpose of this bill is to improve both 911 technology and 911 operations in the state of Oklahoma. It, it appears, if you look at the federal level and the state level, that they want to try and reduce the amount of 911 centers that we have around the state. And so the goal is to bring those into more of these regional centers. And I think ultimately that's, that's where this funding will probably try to get us. Don't know what that'll look like and there's nothing set in stone that that's going to happen or right around the corner, but it appears to be that that's, that's where the standards are heading. So we want to be prepared for that and Oklahoma is ahead of the game in increasing funding. And it's going to allow us, too, to make some upgrades to our 911 center that should help with response times and, and getting those calls answered as well as the staffing. Public safety support is our next line of business with records management, inmate processing, permit services, training, court enforcement and courthouse security. The majority of this line of business is in our records management at 76 positions, training at another 12 positions. As I was going through this presentation, I thought, you know, if I looked at this and thought for a department of our size, you know, you look at that and think we only have 12 trainers. Okay, that's not it. We, that's our full-time staff that we have out there, basically at the training center and does include our professional staff as well. It does not include them. But a majority of our officers on the police department are certified as trainers. And so we bring them in when we do large-scale training to help with whatever discipline that we're working on. So we have a lot more trainers than that. That's just, you know, who we have is our full-time staff. Immate processing is 12 positions, permit services, four positions, courthouse enforcement, four, and courthouse security, another four. Just some things highlighted here, number of arrests these or bookings that have occurred in the, in the past year that have booked in the county jail is 12,743. I'll show you on the next slide kind of how that compares where we're at. And then municipal charges only is just over 4,000. Something here that really want to focus on is our reality-based training unit. If you remember the task force and 21CP, they talked a lot about de-escalation. They didn't talk a lot about how to get there. And so that's where we came up with this reality-based training unit. And it was implemented around the first of 2021. I believe it was January of 2021. We did this at a time when we were really hurting for staffing, but we knew that this was very important. It was important to our community. They wanted to see that. And this reality-based training unit has been a game changer. They, they do so much out there. They not only train our new recruits, but they train our veteran officers as well. And some of the things that, that they do is the, the new state-mandated laser class, which is a class in active shooter that trains all law enforcement agencies around the state of Oklahoma the same. We were able to get our personnel certified in that, so we don't have to send them somewhere else. We can train our own people. So they've done that within the last year, worked on active threat. Our integrated response, we actually trained with the fire department and IMSA on how not only to stop the threat in an active shooter situation, but how to deal with the medical impact afterwards and get those medical resources in there quickly and not have to wait till that building is completely clear or the suspect's in custody. We can start in other areas and get, get them help and going in and working together. That's one of the things that they've been doing. And then they also train all of our departments by sector, so each lieutenant trains So each lieutenant trains with their personnel that they work with on a daily basis, and they learn how to communicate and slow things down and handle situations as they arise out in the field. The use of technology and our less lethal improvements, this plays directly into that reality-based training as well because you can utilize those things in a training environment before you have to go out and use them in a real-world scenario. And probably the best thing too this year is they were in a very small facility within our training center, which we've outgrown, but we know we're working on that and building us a better facility. But we were able to find a facility out off Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street that was like a large warehouse for lease, and we were able to pick that up at a very good price. And we're able to construct a kind of a small little community within there that we can pull police vehicles in, that we can simulate being in an apartment or a business. And just really, it has a large impact on our training. It allows us to be very realistic in what we do. So some of the things, you know, that I've noticed in how this has been successful is, number one, our response to resistance or our use of force, they're going down. We're seeing that, and I'll be able to talk a little bit more about that and give you some numbers later on in the slides. But also too, last year, what very significant, we had three officer-involved shootings. We were averaging between fourteen and sixteen prior to that. And that's a testament to not only the technology and the less lethal that we're putting out there, but to the officers slowing down and not putting themselves in those positions. It's been very critical too in that fact when there was a timeframe within the last ten years that the company Safari Land that provides our body armor said that we, for the region in the vest that they sold, we had more saves than any other agency. So that meant more of our officers were getting struck. So that's not a category you want. You want those saves, you want those officers okay, but we don't want them getting hit with gunfire. We've seen that go down as well. The attacks have not stopped. It's not any different. But what is different is how we're responding in that de-escalation component. It's very significant. So in the next slide, when you look at number of arrestsees processed, you can see that, you know, from our high in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two of just over thirteen thousand, we're projecting an increase for this year. But again, that's just based again, I think, on community size and stuff that we're dealing with, which a lot of times we can't control, you know, who we arrest or how many arrest. It's based on what's going on in the community and how we're taking enforcement action to keep crime at bay. Number of people incarcerated for municipal charges, this from the high back in nineteen and twenty of over five thousand, we've stayed right around the mid to upper three thousand, and this year we're projecting just around four thousand for that. So some things that we're looking at doing in this line of business during this budget year. Number one, I think what has been really significant in keeping us staffed and also keeping our training better and making our retention better in the academies is running three academies per year. Training Center estimates that we should, if we can stay on track, to hire a hundred and thirty new recruits that will graduate in the next fiscal year. So that's our goal. We have capacity for a hundred and sixty, so we'd love to have that many as well. But just based on trends that we're seeing, we're hoping that one thirty will be a little more realistic. We've hired two new background investigators to help us as part of this budget year. That's also helping in getting those employee applications processed. We also contracted with an outside vendor to do the medical exams to present to the pension board. That's helped us in being able to run more close to when the pension board has their cutoff because we can get those medical tests done a lot quicker and get them into the system. Again, too, when we're running these three academies a year, we found out our retention is a lot better. We're not losing near the amount of recruits that we used to. I think we're averaging now about one or two recruits a class that we're losing in the academy. And then sometimes we lose another one or two in FTO. But the great thing too about running three academies, if you have a recruit that gets injured and they can't complete the academy, and you can, you know, get them well, get them ready to go again, they can jump right back in one of those academies that's coming up right behind them. They don't have to wait a long time to get started again. We also too, if we have a recruit that's doing well, but sometimes they wash out in firearms or one of your major blocks, you know, like firearms, defensive tactics, or driving, doesn't mean they're a bad person and they can't do it. And we have a lot of success recycling those individuals. So we keep them on the payroll. We find them a place within the organization to work, but we usually don't have to do that very long because there's another academy coming right up behind them. So that's been very good as well. Another thing too, when you talk about reality-based training, there's a program that was started by PERF. I believe they started this around two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And it's called ICAT, which is Integrating Communication Assessment and Tactics. And what that is again, is a de-escalation program to help you slow things down and not go rushing in, especially when you're dealing with someone in a mental health crisis. So the reality-based training team, they're all certified in that. And we've been running our officers through this program and getting them trained. And just to give you some numbers, in two thousand nineteen, we had five hundred and sixty-one response to resistance investigations. And that's anytime an officer uses force beyond routine handcuffing, we have to work an investigation on that. So two thousand nineteen was five sixty-one, twenty twenty was five twenty-nine. Fast forward to last year, which we've now had, you know, two full years with the reality-based training unit, we were down to four hundred and ninety investigations. So, and again, the biggest thing that I think, because it has the most impact on the community is those officer-involved shootings that we have been able to reduce. We don't control a lot of those. I realize that. But by our slowing down and not rushing into these situations, we're seeing that we're less likely to be involved in a shooting. Next line of business is special operations. This includes uniform support and traffic safety. Special operations support, special protection events and emergency response, also known as SPIR. So uniform support, traffic safety accounts for the most positions here, a hundred and twenty-three. Special operations is eighty-eight, and then special protection or SPIR is six. So one of the things we're most excited about is our traffic safety reorganization. I couldn't believe this, but when we started looking at things in areas that we've restructured the department, traffic safety had not been one that we had looked at. And what we found out is we were running traffic safety and the way we aligned those units that worked within traffic safety, we were running those the same as we did in the late seventies. Most of that had been created during that time. I think you would agree Oklahoma City is a little bit different now than it was in the nineteen seventies. And so the challenges in traffic safety in a community this size are immense. And so we had to restructure our traffic safety unit. Also too, in that restructuring, we, in the process in this budget year, we're going to be hiring an analyst to help us determine better where those traffic issues are occurring, where the accidents are occurring, and how we target those in those timeframes to reduce accidents and fatalities. Another thing too that's changed, the legalization of marijuana has increased the amount of drug impaired drivers we see on our roadways. So through the Highway Safety Office, they really liked what we were doing in traffic safety, and they funded a position within the Traffic Safety Office. That's a Drug Recognition Expert Coordinator. His goal is not only to help around the state in teaching and getting more drug recognition experts out there, but to grow our program as well. And I believe if I remember right on that grant, they fund seventy-five percent of his salary. So that allows us to use him twenty-five percent of the time doing some things just directly for our department, not just things for around the state. But it's going to benefit us all because when he's running a class for officers around the state, our officers can also be in those classes as well. So it's really going to help with that. But the goal is reducing fatalities. We had ninety-three fatalities in the last fiscal year. That's too many. We want to do everything we can to reduce that. And, you know, it's not just fatalities, but the number of collisions and DUI arrests. Our DUI arrests in the last year have gone up, I mean, which is good. We're getting those people off the road. But there's also an education component to traffic safety. And so part of that too is we'll be going out into the community and educating people about safe driving habits and not driving intoxicated. The United States Marshal Service, each year we work with them as part of a task force to, we usually do this during the summer months, to address our most violent individuals in the community, try to get them off the streets because violence tends to rise in the summer. And so last year, last summer, we did Operation Triple Beam. It was called Rolling Thunder, and we made four hundred and sixty-three total arrests, a hundred and seventy-six firearms received, recovered, thirteen homicide suspects arrested, and four missing and kidnapped children were recovered during that operation. I think it's important and sad to point out, but this task force, the U.S. Marshals, they run these all around the country. Yesterday in Charlotte, North Carolina, they were serving a warrant. They had eight officers shot and four killed as part of these task forces. So these are very dangerous, complicated operations, but we were able to run these with, I don't remember, we had maybe one or two response to resistance during the entire operation. No officers hurt and no suspects hurt as well. We were able to bring all of them in custody safely. So that's a testament to the professionalism and the amount of work that these individuals do. And please keep those folks in Charlotte in your prayers as well. So some things as part of the traffic safety unit is what we call the Vision Zero Community. The Vision Zero Community mission is to reduce collisions of any type. And the goal is we want to be a community that has no fatalities in a year. That's ultimately our goal. But part of that is, and it's some of the things that you're already doing in traffic design, bike lanes, other things like that that keep pedestrians safe. It's the traffic design as well as the enforcement component. And really, you know, our component as part of this is what we call the three Es, education, enforcement, and evaluation. So that's how we hope to reach our Vision Zero goal as well as the traffic design and other things that you're working on. Our homeless outreach team, the encampment rehousing initiative is going strong. And through that collaboration, we collaborate with the following partners, the Homeless Strategy Implementation Manager, the Associate Planner, Crisis Systems Project Manager, Community Response Outreach, Mental Health Association of Oklahoma. And they've been able to, since the inception of this or since September, a hundred and twenty-six people have been rehoused from nine different encampments. So it's a team effort that involves that initial response and those folks working on rehousing or getting those people housed, and then our homeless outreach team coming along behind them, making sure those camps are cleaned up and not re-inhabited. It's been successful. It's working well, and looking forward to see where that goes from here. And then some of you may be aware, the SPIR team, they developed a dashboard using technology that the city already had. It's been very beneficial in helping us track storm damage, special events. I got to see it in action this past weekend at the Memorial Marathon. I was down there working with them. We knew where all of our officers were. They could check in and out on this app. And it's really helped us become more efficient in handling special events. And not only the handling on the law enforcement side, but the scheduling for folks in the community and, you know, how they go through the permitting process. So we're pretty excited about that as well. And then of course, our Real-Time Information Center just continues to grow. Our partnership with local schools and getting access to those cameras. As you know, the Uvalde After Action Report, that was one of the things that they really highlighted was law enforcement having access to those cameras during a time of crisis. So we're working on that. We're estimating that that will grow to other school systems that are wanting to come on board with the Real-Time Information Center. We have twenty-six private schools already integrated, and we're striving for this to be a twenty-four-hour operating operation. And two analysts will be added as part of this year's budget. And then the traffic analysts I mentioned earlier will be part of that as well. This fiscal year, or just, I'm sorry, in March, just to give you some idea of what the Real-Time Information Center is doing, they assisted patrol officers and detectives on eight hundred and eighty-two activities, and eighteen different categories were tracked. They had, they assisted in fifty-one arrests, sixty-three stolen vehicles recovered, fourteen kidnappings, a hundred and eighty-six accidents, a hundred and five welfare checks, and eighty-eight disturbances. What's most important in this is not what you see that they're doing in helping the officers that are responding, it's how they're preventing officers from responding to things they don't need to. Because a lot of those disturbances and welfare checks, they can get on and look at a camera and tell the officer or the dispatcher, you don't need to go to that. There's nothing out there. We can see. It's clear. And then Chief Kelly talked about the UAV as first responder program that will be able to be operated out of our Real-Time Information Center as needed. So when you have some of those calls that may take officers a longer time to get to, we can launch a UAV and look and see, do the officers need to go out there? Or more importantly, if there is something going on there, the officers know what they're getting into and are less likely to be involved in a dangerous confrontation because they can plan better for what they're about to witness. So we're looking forward to seeing where this goes. And, you know, one success story recently is we had a homicide that occurred at a convenience store February twenty-third of this year. And the Real-Time Information Center actually picked that crime up, saw it happening on the camera, identified the vehicle. We were able to track that vehicle down and had all the suspects in custody in that within three hours. So that's pretty significant because we probably, it would have been a very difficult crime to solve just because of the nature of it and what happened. So that's just one success story. So just as a reminder, during our resident survey last year, ninety-point-six percent of our residents reported fair treatment when they had interaction with an Oklahoma City police officer. I think that's significant, and I think when you're talking about budgets and funding, and the majority of our budgets is people, it's a testament to our people in what they're doing and how they're serving the residents of this community. So we're very proud of that. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions on anything we've talked about or maybe didn't, I'm happy to answer those.
Couple of questions. Staffing challenges that we've had over the last couple of years, I'm really excited to hear that we're three academies, a hundred and sixty capacity with recruits. Outside of the recruiting that we're doing with the academies, what are we doing locally, statewide, national to recruit officers? And are we being successful at doing that?
I think we are being successful. Our applications, they're not where they were pre-two thousand twenty, but we are seeing them go up. Another thing too that I've noticed, and the recruiters will tell you this too, it seems like the ones that we do get in the door now are, they really want to be here. You know, they're not just looking for a job. I think because of the challenges in law enforcement, if you want to do this and you take the time to go through that recruiting process, you really want to do the job. So we're seeing that, and I think that's why we're losing less of them too. As far as things that we're doing, we're getting very creative through social media, targeting areas of the country that may not be as supportive of law enforcement and trying to, you know, kind of reach out through that, through social media, things that you can do there in your internet searches. And we have had, we've had several recruits when they talk about why they came to Oklahoma City that aren't from here, it's because they research online. And it's not just the police department, but it's the community itself and what Oklahoma City is doing and how it's growing. They're very interested in that. We've got a program right now that Deputy Chief Clifton has been working on with our recruiting staff that we're partnering with the University of Central Oklahoma, and we're looking, expanding this to other universities as well. That basically, when you bring people into these colleges and universities that want to go through the law enforcement programs, that we're recruiting them very early on in that and basically telling them through internships and, you know, other things that they will take advantage of through the department. But also too, that if you follow this path and you stay out of trouble, and we're helping them through that and telling them how to do that, how to navigate the process, you get your degree, you'll have a job waiting on you on the other side. And so I think that's going to help us kind of grow that base is try and get those folks when they're interested in law enforcement early on. And not all of them want to be police officers. We have a very good partnership with UCO right now that steps our property crime specialists and our CSI's. So we already had that in place, and that was kind of an easy start there. But we're looking at partnering with the University of Oklahoma, with Langston and others, and trying to grow that program.
And then the second question, the new wellness administrative lead program, I'm really excited to hear about that. The Magnus app, a couple of questions about that. Is that used with that program? And then this new app, are we the first police department to use that Magnus app?
We're the first major city police department? I don't know. I know when they first showed me agencies that were using it at the time. I know there was some corrections on there, but I can't remember, maybe some county sheriffs, I think were on there. But yeah, we're definitely the largest organization to use that. And then what was your other question? I'm sorry.
Just how the app works with the lead program. You mentioned some videos. Are those videos tied to the new program?
So they are. Wellness, the wellness officers that we have assigned are full-time wellness staff and our professional staff is on there, and also volunteers throughout the department that do that. They identify certain issues, and that's how they create content. So they create the content based on what they're seeing that, you know, officers are coming to them with or our professional staff are coming to them with, and they create content based on that. For example, I was on the app yesterday looking at a couple of videos, and they were talking about nutrition and exercise. And they were very good videos. And the good thing about it is we know there's not one size fit all. And they were very good videos, and the good thing about it is we know there's not one size fit all. And that's the way those videos were designed, is, you know, "Hey, here's some options. Here's some things that you do." And so, the leave program, it can be tied to that as far as an education component, but it's a very, the process is very, what's the word I'm looking for? Not secretive, but private. So, that those employees that are seeking that leave know that their information's not going to get out and be spread. So, there's a process for them to go to a wellness officer and say, "I'm at that point. I need help." Those wellness officers can then come directly to me. I'm the only one that can approve that. And so, we try to keep it, and, you know, word gets out. I mean, if they're gone for 60, 90 days. But at that point, you know, most of them want to tell their story when they come back anyway, because they're so excited that they feel so much better. And they just, and again, so far, it's been 100% success rate in getting those officers back to work, getting them healthy, and helping save their families as well.
Outstanding. Thank you for the presentation today. You sure you don't want to come back for one more?
I don't know. The money's right. No, I'm kidding. No, I think it's time. I think it's time to let somebody else take a shot at it.
Thanks for all you've done.
You bet.
Chief, I got a question on the fatality statistic. I'm excited about the zero vision thing, but is that 93 fatalities, is that pedestrian, auto, 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 a mix of the two? What's the percentage of?
It's all the above. Any fatality accident that occurs within Oklahoma City, and I'm glad you brought up the pedestrians, that is where we're seeing our biggest increase. And we've been working with some nonprofits and with some others to, what we've seen that has worked in some other cities is, especially in our unhoused population, that's where a lot of these are coming from, because they're mobile, on their feet or on their bicycles, and they're out during different times when their lighting isn't good and other things like that. So, that's part of that, when we have these accidents, looking at the causation and what can we do to help that. But we've been working with some nonprofits to look at bracelets that we can hand out in the community that glow, so that cars can see them a little bit better. And there's a program, too, where I think we were working with Homeless Alliance on maybe some vests that we could hand out and ask folks to wear that are reflective. But the pedestrian fatalities is our greatest growing area of concern.
Thank you.
Chief, I was going to ask if you could have someone send me some information on that Magnus app? I think that's very interesting.
Absolutely. I can have our wellness team reach out. They're the ones that pretty much drive the content that's on there, and they've been working very close with the Magnus staff. And again, like when we got our GAGE report this year, I gave them that raw data, and they put it into the stuff that they have. These guys are way smarter than me. And were able to really break it down and show us, you know, things are going well here, you need improvement here, and still keep that anonymity with it. It didn't change anything. And that's the thing about the app, too, is I have the app on my phone. When I sign into it, and I, they do surveys. Like at least once or twice a week, I'm getting surveys from them on things, not only the health of the organization or what's going on within the department, but how is my health? What's going on with me? Do I feel satisfied and, you know, having any health issues and things like that? So, that's all very much anonymous, but it allows them to report back to us. As a matter of fact, I think our coordinator over our section, I think he's coming next week or a week after. I can't remember. He's coming in the next few weeks to sit down with us and go over this quarter's data and what's going on. Also, too, one of the things that we're trying out, me and the deputy chiefs, is a leadership program that is, you go through this process through the app, and it's a series of videos and questions and kind of training and things that it challenges you to do based on what your goals are as leaders. So, we're trying it out right now. That'll be part of the feedback that he'll give us when he comes down here, and we're looking at expanding that to, you know, to our majors and lieutenants and captains and sergeants as well.
Cool. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
You bet.
Chief, just a question. On the new reporting system and the trends analysis related to that, one of the things that I've tried to do, and I know a lot of other council members have as well, is advising our constituency to make those reports, even when it's just an annoying, somebody tried their car door in their driveway, and they caught it on their, you know, doorbell camera kind of thing. But it leads to those trend analysises that can make changes on a bigger scale. Because that kid that might be trying that door today could be smashing a window tomorrow, could be robbing a convenience store later, but if we can get engaged with them early on and figure out what is really going on and provide either correction or services that they may need, then I think we have an opportunity to continue to help make improvements in those areas. So, I'm really excited about the opportunity for residents to be able to just go online and make those kinds of reports. You know, they don't have to wait on hold. They don't have to wait, you know, and work in their schedule for an officer to call them back. And our officers don't have to spend their time on that sort of thing, but we can do the analysis on that. So, I'm real excited about that. Thank you for sharing that today. And then, I also want to talk about the 93 fatalities and involved. Councilwoman Nice and I, I believe, are both on the Vision Zero Committee. It's been put together, and I am incredibly impatient, waiting for additional information. So, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if maybe we can, what I would like to see is a map of the general areas where those are occurring. If maybe we can get something on that a little bit sooner than waiting on the committee. I know they're pulling in information from all the other cities as well in the area. And so, that'll be, you know, good information to have going forward. But I'd really like to know where that is in our city today, if we could do something with that. And then, just in closing, thank you for your service. When I came into the department in 1999, nope, 1998, it's been a minute. You were in the department then, and I've had the opportunity and pleasure to see you grow and change, and the department changed under your leadership, and the leadership of the folks that you've brought up behind you, and all of the great work that's going on right now, and the progress that is coming ahead of us, too, and the foundation that you have helped lay for that. We cannot thank you enough for your service to this community. It has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Helps if you can hear me. So, that's the conclusion of item number four. We'll be moving now to item number five, Citizens to Be Heard. When I call your name, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name. If I mess it up, please correct me, and your address. And then, you'll have three minutes, and the city clerk will, there'll be a time on the screen, and the city clerk will give you a 30-second warning. So, first up, I have Merrily Periam.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, my name is Merrily Periam. I'm at 1001 Northwest 16th Street. I'm a member of First Unitarian Church, and I live in Mesa Park. I'm here today to ask you to devote more of our city resources and dollars to preventing and solving problems in our city. The more we can proactively ensure that all our citizens are having their needs met and able to thrive, the less we will feel a need to reactively respond with policing. And I heard a lot of talk about the ways that we're shifting that, and I love it. Affordable housing, living wages, healthcare, mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, education, safe transportation, these are the things that make communities stable and thriving. I ask you to dedicate more of our budget to ensuring that these needs are met for everyone and less to our police department, which often struggles to hold itself accountable. Last spring, I attended a dinner with the chief gathering. I really appreciate that they do that with the community. I appreciated hearing about their focus on core values, and I learned a lot. However, during that gathering, I asked a deputy chief which recommendations of 21CP had been implemented, and if there was a timeline for implementing the others. She responded by telling me that they were already implementing all of the recommendations. I was surprised to hear that, and rightly so, because I later found out that it's simply not true. After dinner, another attendee brought up Daniel Holtzclaw. In passing, I said, "I imagine you've put things into place to catch things like that sooner." And a major surprised me by saying, "No, no, there's no way we can catch someone like that who knows how to hide it." I pushed back in surprise at his answer, and then both he and the deputy chief assured me that if an officer wants to do what Holtzclaw did, there's no way for them to prevent it. Needless to say, I was not reassured about the effectiveness of our police department. And that was after last January at the Tower Theater Forum, when Chief Gorley said that the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police ties his hands when it comes to disciplining officers. If OKCPD continues to receive such a large portion of the budget, they should, at the very least, be implementing every single one of 21CP's recommendations.
30 seconds remaining.
And holding themselves accountable. I'm nearly done. I ask you to continue to shift resources to proactive community safety. Ensure through your budget and your policies that our citizens have their needs met and can thrive. When an armed officer interacts with the public, they come with the authority to arrest and even kill. This almost inevitably raises tensions and complicates situations. We should only be having armed officers present when absolutely necessary. The safest communities are not those with the most police. They are the ones with the most resources, and you get to direct the resources.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Periam.
Thank you.
Next up, Tevin McDaniel.
Hello. My name is Tevin McDaniel. I live at 2400 Northwest 30th Street. I am here to second what Merrily just said, and also ask, please, to devote more resources and more money to those resources. History has not changed. We are still top 10 in incarceration and police fatalities. I don't know who they were surveying for that 90% number that they got, but in the communities where these police officers are patrolling, and we often see, there isn't a reliance that those communities have or feel safe with police officers, and we've continued to see that. This isn't a new conversation. This is a really old conversation. And like she said, y'all have the authority to take those budget, the money, and put it in places where our communities can actually thrive, our communities can live, and not be in fear for their lives every single day. Police officers have shown, and the history, again, has shown that they were created to do one thing and one thing alone, and it is to incarcerate. We still have high incarceration rates, especially when we talk about domestic violence and how we incarcerate the most women in the country. And for that to be said, also must also mean the world, because in the US, we incarcerate the most people. So, to think about that and incarcerating survivors, folks who are actually going through things, those are the folks who really need these resources and not police officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Aurelius Francisco?
Good morning, council. It's great to be with y'all. My name is Aurelius Francisco, born and raised on the east side of Oklahoma City Ward 7. I serve as a co-executive director of a local nonprofit called Foundation for Liberating Minds. And with this organization, a lot of the work that we do is changing what is possible for our communities and instilling hope and imagination in our communities. And I want you all, I know the budget process is incredibly tedious and long, but I want you all to take up the mantle of understanding that our budget is a moral document. It points to where our priorities are. It indicates what communities and what people we care about as a city, and ensuring that our resources are dedicated to communities that have been historically deprived of those resources in an equitable manner, because we saw with the police department, one of their values is equity. And that should be that for the entire city. And so much of that is about moving resources away from policing and into community-based resources. I also want to mention that I'm hesitant to even speak today and to attend these meetings and these sessions, because I have quite a bit of reluctance and lack of faith that my voice will be heard, that my concerns will be heard by this body and by this city, and actually be implemented. And so, I want to urge you all in future budget sessions, and as departments are implementing their budgets throughout the year, that we do more than just a 20-day period of citizen insight, and that we actually move towards a participatory budget process that is community-driven, that ensures that community members' voices are heard, and that we're actually implementing the things that we need in our communities as everyday residents here in Oklahoma City. Things like affordable housing, public transportation, food access, mental healthcare, and crisis response. Was really excited to hear what the fire department is working on with these crisis response teams. 20 staffers is a start. We need far more than that. It does need to be 24 hours. The reality that Chief Gorley can say that the police are the only 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service in the city is a major, major issue, right? Because as a black man in this city, the police do not equal safety for me. When I see a police officer, my heart sinks to the pit of my stomach.
30 seconds remaining.
The police are, instill fear in me, and that is the reality for so many community members here in Oklahoma City. And so, I want to encourage you all to continue to push more resources around homelessness and mental healthcare, around violence prevention, and not just violence response that the police serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. And with that, we're adjourned.